You can all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'd call roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here.
Mayor Boule.
Here.
Counselor Champlin.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Here.
Counselor Kennison.
Here.
Counselor Kretovic.
Here.
Counselor Mattson.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Here.
Counselor Nyhan.
Present.
Counselor Pierce.
Present.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
And Counselor Warner.
He is excused. He is out of the country. Could I have a motion for the minutes of October 12th?
Moved. Second.
Motion being second to approve the minutes of October 12th. Suggestions, suggestions, none, ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the ayes have it. At this time, I'd like to recognize Clerk to do the canvass of the votes for the municipal election held on November 2nd, 2021.
Thank you. In follow-up to the November 2nd election, and in accordance with the city charter, conduct of elections, the city council shall canvass the votes cast, declaring that the candidates receiving the highest number of votes at the municipal election be declared elected. That being said, for the office of mayor, Jim Boule had the most votes. For at-large city councilor, Amanda Grady Sexton and Fred Keach received the highest number of votes. Ward 1, City Councilor Brent Todd was re-elected. Ward 2, City Councilor Earl Pierce was re-elected.
Squeak.
For Ward 3, Jennifer Kretovic, current city councilor, was re-elected. Ward 4, City Councilor Karen McNamara was re-elected. For Ward 5, Stacy Brown was elected. Ward 6, Paula McLaughlin was elected. Ward 7, Counselor Keith Nyhan was re-elected. Ward 8, Counselor Gail Mattson was re-elected. Ward 9, Counselor Candace Bouchard was re-elected. And last but not least, for Ward 10, Counselor Xander Rice Hawkins was re-elected.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to accept the cancel of the votes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion being second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the ayes have it. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you like to do an introduction of our new zoning administrator?
Yes, I will, Your Honor. Ernie, could come forward and talk to the city council. There he is. So the city council is aware we have a new zoning administrator, Ernie Cleverly? Please.
Welcome.
May I just say a few words to the council in expressing your history?
Sure. I appreciate being given the opportunity to work for the city. It's been a couple of months now, and it's been a pretty smooth transition for me so far. I hope it has been for everybody else.
Welcome to the city. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda. Does, do we have a motion for our consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved, second.
I'd like to remove item 27. That's acceptable, everybody? Okay. So with the removal of item 27, nothing else is removed, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Takes us to our public hearings this evening. With the approval of the council, I'd like to put together items 34A, B, and C, since they're all dealing with the exact same topic. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So let me ask the audience, how many people are here for these three hearings? If you say one thing. I apologize. This is Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. How many of you are there?
There you go.
There we go.
Got you. Okay. So, we are going to try to, we're here to listen to you all, if you wish, but I would encourage, if you've heard something that someone else has said, that you don't necessarily need to repeat their comments. But, as you know, we're here to welcome anybody's input. Just for the heck of it, just get a quick show of hands, how many people are here to, that would support keeping it the same? How many people would? Say again? How many people who support keeping it the same, not patented? How many people would support changing it? Okay. So, the people who support changing it may want to consider that, quite a few are here to do that, so, if you just remember to keep your remarks, you have a lot of the support. Okay? So with that, Madam Clerk, if you could read the first three items, please.
Yes. First item is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 34 Personnel Rules and Regulations, Article 3410 Attendants, Section 3410 III Holidays. The second item is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title I General Code, Chapter 1 Public Health, Article 13-6 Noise, Construction Noise. And then the third one is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title I General Code, Chapter 1 Government Organization, Article 1-5 Fees, Fines, and Penalties, Schedule II, Section 19-1-1, Penalties for Parking Violations.
And before we open the public hearing, go ahead. Mr. Manager, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Okay. So before we open the public hearing, I'll just share one last thing with you. If you sent an email, every counselor has received that email, and we've had a chance to read it, so I'd very much appreciate it if you've already sent an email. I just want to let you know, those have been distributed to everyone in the council, we all have those. Okay? So, who would like to go first? There you go, right there. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for considering this, changing the 2nd Monday of October to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you in favor of this change. My name is Jeanne Holt, I am a resident of Concord. And as you can probably tell, I'm not of Italian or Native American ancestry. So I don't have the emotional connection to Columbus Day that some Italian-Americans do, nor do I experience the deep grief that Columbus Day annually inflicts on Native peoples. But I can listen, and I can believe both sides of the debate. By refocusing the October holiday, we will create opportunities to join with and support our Native brothers and sisters in their grief. But we will also have opportunities to make visible and celebrate the contributions Native Americans have made to the United States. The holiday will celebrate the resilience of Native peoples across this country, and an Indigenous Peoples' Day will create a forum for Native American peoples to share their vibrant and diverse cultures to enrich the lives of all of us, even non-Natives like me. One of the objections I've heard to changing the day, the name of the October holiday, is that people of Italian descent are proud of Columbus as part of their heritage. Humans want to be proud of ourselves, and our families, and our heritage. We want to celebrate our ancestors and proclaim their greatness of our forebears. But in thinking about Columbus Day, I have begun to wonder, why would anyone want to celebrate someone whose accomplishment, discovering the new world, was not really an accomplishment at all? And why would we celebrate someone whose cruelty was, in his own time, considered criminal enough to have him arrested and tried? With so many heroes in Italian history, Da Vinci, Galileo, Michelangelo come immediately to mind, maybe we can consign Columbus to the dustbin of history, celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on the 2nd Monday of October, and pick a new date to celebrate the Italians who truly made positive contributions that continue to enrich the lives of all of us, even non-Italians like me. I speak as one who bears on her shoulders the sins of generations of light-skinned blond-haired dominating colonists. I am not responsible for those sins, only for atoning when and where I can. I did not build the house we live in, but I am responsible for its upkeep, and I say it's time for major renovations. This name change is one small but important step in building a more just future for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Holt? Appreciate you coming out tonight. You want to go next? You want to go next? Nope, here we go. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. So, sorry here. Hello, my name is Asmael Huni, I'm the Movement Politics Director with Rights and Democracy in New Hampshire, and I am also a resident of Ward 9 in Concord. And I live in a great area on Mauden Road, where I am extremely happy because it's a diverse community, and I love living in diversity. I wrote to all of you, and I hope you were able to read what I sent. I just wanted to speak to two things, some of which I've shared in the email. One, the majority of historians are in agreement that Columbus did not discover, or had he founded America, and that there was violence enacted that was documented describing everything from forced submission to slavery, torture, and killings towards the indigenous population that was already there. I understand that there is a group of people, and I emphasize "a group" because they do not speak for all Italians, who wish to keep this day. As I mentioned in the email, I understand that there is value in honoring and recognizing a people, and there is appropriate time and place for that as well. Columbus Day should not be that for the Italian culture. I shared with you, as a Libyan-American, I too love when people are honored and people like me are celebrated. And unlike the Italian-Americans, who are now accepted into mainstream America, for the most part at least, we are still stigmatized and looked down upon. In fact, we're criticized for having any cultural pride, and critiqued for not assimilating, whatever that means. Only a few months ago, Libyans were banned from ever coming to the U.S. I share this to say that despite the need for more acceptance of Muslims and Libyans, it would be incredibly inappropriate and improper to ask any city to celebrate Libyans or Muslims, Muslim-Americans, on a day that was formerly connected to any kind of violent history that celebrates someone from my community. It would not be good for my community's image, nor is it good for the message we are trying to send about our culture to everyone. It is also disappointing that some people would want to connect themselves to a violent historical figure, and I, and call it celebrating their culture, or link it to their cultural pride. And I don't mean that to attack the Italian community in any way, but I'm sharing what many Italians themselves have said, that we are perpetuating a harm when we decide to continue to celebrate or honor such a violent figure like Columbus. Italian-Americans, just like people from my culture, have contributed positively to the American culture, and New Hampshire can honor them still by choosing another day that does not erase the brutality enacted upon an indigenous community that we have yet to actually even acknowledge in most classrooms. This opportunity allows us to move in the direction of making things right, not only for past mistakes, but mistakes we are currently making towards the indigenous community. This project of America was a messy one, and continues to be a messy one. We all stand still on unceded indigenous territory that we never made amends for, our country has in its past and current mistakes. And it comes with moments that make us incredibly proud as well. Today, we have an opportunity to contribute to the proud moments in our country as we make good history together, and move us towards the multiracial democracy that we so desperately need, where white, brown, and black can live together and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Ms. Holt. So, before I do the next one, we don't have to applaud after everyone speaks. We all appreciate you all coming out, but you don't, you don't need to applaud. Who would like to go next? You, and then we'll go there. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, and City Councilors. As the city councilor-elect for Ward 5, I would like to echo the sentiments of city councilors Karen McNamara and Xander Rice Hawkins, that the 2nd Monday in October should be renamed Indigenous Peoples' Day. While campaigning over the last two months, I met many residents from Ward 5 who expressed their unconditional and enthusiastic support for changing the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I stand with them, and I believe this is the right thing to do. It is a small act with a powerful message that we recognize and reject the violence inflicted upon indigenous peoples, and instead choose to embrace equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Who would like to go next? Actually, you know what? There you go. Sorry. Good evening, and welcome. I said welcome. Good evening.
My name is Lydia Yen, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Change for Concord. But first, I'll start off with a land acknowledgement. We want to acknowledge that we gather as Change for Concord on Indakina, which is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Penna-Cook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land and waterways and the Alnobak people who have stewarded Indakina throughout the generations. We are here to express support for changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. In history class, we are supposed to learn the real history of America, but the history we are taught is censored. Indigenous people are talked about as if they no longer exist, and Columbus is painted in a good light. A lot of the horrible acts he committed is left out of the history lessons. Indigenous folks are portrayed as nuisance, and at worst, simply a piece of fauna to be commodified or eradicated. We're not given the truth about what they endured, and what they're still enduring this day. Indigenous children are forced to hear about this censored history and to relive the trauma their grandparents went through, while Columbus is portrayed as a hero. Some may say they honor Columbus Day because of what it represents to them, their ancestors searching for safety and acceptance in their new home. But what about the safety and acceptance for indigenous people? What about the pillaging, raping, and genocide Columbus caused? These acts are not excusable. Celebrating him is equivalent to celebrating genocide. We should celebrate the contributions indigenous people made to our country, instead of celebrating a figure who committed terrible acts. Chester, Dover, Durham, Hopkinton, Keene, and Nashua. These are some of the cities that replaced Columbus Day for Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's time for Concord to also make that change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else have? I like that, that's great. Go ahead.
There you go.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, members of the city council. I'm Roy Schwecker, and I promise you, you'll hear something from me you won't hear from anybody. And that is that I, I, over 50 years ago, my family wanted one of the traditional tours of the western United States, and we went to a place called Custer Battlefield National Historic Site. And since then, that was considered not be a good name, but they did not change it to Crazy Horse National Historic Site because he won. It's now the Big Horn Battlefield, because that's a neutral change. And that is, in fact, what I'm going to suggest you do about the 2nd Monday in October. Because we've heard a lot about Columbus, which incidentally was not his name, he was from Genoa, his name was Christophero Colombo. Genoa was not part of Italy, because Italy wasn't a nation then, it was an independent city-state, that later, you know, became part of a greater Italy. The activities there were limited, so he moved to Portugal, where he called himself Cristoveo Colom, and married a Portuguese woman. But the Portuguese, who were one of the major sea powers, you know, couldn't give him the opportunity, wanted to run this expedition. So he then moved to Spain, and called himself Cristobal Colom, and finally got King Ferdinand and Queen Isabella to stake his expedition to the West. So I would say, if you wish to have a day to, you know, recognize him, instead of anglicizing it, you should call it Colombo Day, or Colom Day. And then the only problem would be people would want to know why you have a holiday named after a police lieutenant or a red socked policeman. So, I think that clearly, we have a very historic day, which I will call Hemisphere Cultural Exchange Day. People think that perhaps some Irish priest went to North America from Ireland before him. There's more thought that Vikings had a brief colony in the Americas, but neither of these was sustained, and in effect, they were forgotten. Whereas, once Columbus came, there has been a continual cultural exchange back and forth between the western hemisphere and eastern hemisphere. And that's what this day should be marked upon. We should not have winners and losers saying, okay, Columbus was a bad guy, so we'll give this day to the indigenous peoples. We should not keep a Columbus Day, which wasn't even his name. We should say, this is a historic day, and we should memorialize it by calling it Hemisphere Cultural Exchange Day, or some similar thing, so that we're being neutral and not picking one side over the other in this discussion. And I agree with those people who say that we need to know more about the indigenous peoples of this area. I happen to know the name of the emperor of the Aztecs, but I have no clue who the chiefs of the Abenaki were at the time that the people came here. I think that maybe Columbus was a bad guy, but I think many of the immigrants were not. For instance, the pilgrims today would be called refugees. They were religiously persecuted, they were chased out of England, they chased out of the country. They chased Alhahn. They came here. They took land that was not in use because the previous inhabitants had died. So, you know, calling them murderers and so forth is really not appropriate. I think that, yes, we have, you know, some bad things on both sides, but we need to make this a neutral statement, because Concord, unlike all these other towns, is supposed to welcome immigrants and refugees. And in essence, by creating Indigenous Peoples' Day, you're saying, "No, we don't want anybody. We should have left this place to the indigenous peoples." I think that's a mistake. Whereas if we call it the Hemisphere Cultural Exchange Day, or somebody certainly can come up with a better name for it, then we're recognizing the fact that there are a lot of different groups of people here, and we're not picking sides in it. I think that, yes, we need to have a fairer education. You know, Columbus did an amazing feat in convincing the king and queen to stake his expedition, traveling here and getting back alive, but that doesn't mean he is God. It doesn't mean he needs a day in his favor. We need to recognize that day for what it is. It's a date that transformed the entire world because of the, you know, sides having continual exchange since then. And, yes, I think we need to recognize the history of the Native Americans, but one thing I'd like to ask the Abenaki to explain to me someday is how they got this land. They didn't buy it from a realtor. They didn't have realtors done. So I think they got the land the same way that the Europeans did. They took it by their rules from a weaker group. And like I say, I'd be interested in hearing, you know, how that happened too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Good. Thanks. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Fong Guret. I'd like to thank Cawthor Academy for coming and all these students and the Kowasak Band of the Pennecook Abenaki. My name is Fong Guret, and I live in New Hampshire. I am requesting that Columbus Day be changed to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I have a strong pride in my ancestry, and I am a descendant of the Blackfeet Nation. Growing up in New Hampshire as a child, I was keenly aware of the injustices committed against Native Americans, being this is our nation first. All of this land is native land. I also had the experience of living on a reservation. For quite a few years, I attended school on Navajo Reservation. My college on the Blackfeet Reservation did not have a dormitory, and I got to see firsthand the struggles that Native Americans go through. Before Columbus era, there were millions of indigenous peoples in North America, Central America, and South America. The Wabanaki, known as the People of the Dawn, lived in New Hampshire long before Columbus survived, also known as the Kowasak Band of the Pennecook Abenaki. Indigenous people here thrived in harmony with Godakina, which means world for the Wabanaki. Their culture is rich in tradition, honor, and respect for their people, land, and wildlife. For me, Columbus Day is not a day of joy. It is a day for mourning, and for indigenous people, it is a day of mourning. It is said that there were over 120 million indigenous peoples in this land. After Columbus area, there is said that there was under 8 million. That is genocide. That is genocide beyond what Hitler did in modern times. It is a day of mourning. During this period of terrorism, indigenous peoples were massacred, raped, enslaved, tortured. Changing this holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day offers honor and respect to our people. As Columbus Day, this day only marks a false representation of what happened in the past. We must never repeat this. By changing the name to Indigenous Peoples' Day, you will offer truth and respect to indigenous peoples. It is a chance for New Hampshire residents, indigenous and non-indigenous, to honor those who came before them and respect the indigenous peoples who survived to carry on such native, such rich native traditions for our future seven generations. Please change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day in Concord. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great. Appreciate that. We do have a question. We actually have two. Excuse me for a second.
Excuse me?
Scott Ed. Do you mind? Actually, some people want to ask a question.
Sorry?
It's okay. Councilor Credit Big.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for the public record, it's important that we know what town you're from, and it is from Bedford.
Runney, New Hampshire?
Yes.
Yep.
In Bedford, correct?
No, Runney, New Hampshire.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Also, Pierce.
Thank you. In my research on this, please correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that Native Americans really had no concept of land ownership, that it was the land was there for all to use and so on and so forth. Yet you mentioned it was the Native Americans' land. So I'm... Can you reconcile that?
So many tribes do believe that we don't own the land. We exist with the land. Let me rephrase that. But there are some tribes that do have territories in that, and that was there. But generally, it's a live in harmony with the land and respect it. So there's over 500 tribes in the United States. For instance, my tribe is one of the tribes in the Blackfeet Reservation that still maintains some of their ancestral lands to this day. The Pennecook Abenaki, you can speak to Paul and Denise, they also have more of that, that thinking that we do not own the land. We do not feel we own the land, but it was also that is still, we're proud to say that that is still our territory, that we maintain some of it. And I can tell you for myself and many other people I know that are indigenous that we feel that this is still indigenous land, and we still, basic issues, fighting to keep our land on the reservation, that we still are doing that to maintain what we had. So I hope that helps. Any other questions?
We do actually more. Councilor Kansas.
It's my understanding that Native Americans consider themselves stewards of the land and not owners. It's the colonists who... Where there was a notion of we own the land, that's where that came from, not from indigenous people. And they just moved, I mean, just wiped out entire tribes.
That's true. There are some tribes that don't exist, and you're right. And I see what you were saying, but for us, just especially tribes that are put on reservations, we are still trying to gain that and gain some of our land that has been stolen and lost. So it is an interesting parallel. While we do not own it, we do not feel we own it, we do feel that we are protectors of it and the environment and for our culture and our future seven generations coming.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
This time, we'll call on Charlie Russell.
Good evening, and welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Congratulations on your reelection, and for those that didn't run, thanks for your service. I'm Charlie Russell. I live on Columbus Avenue. I'm not sure this council is the right place or this body has the power to change Columbus Day. State law, Chapter 288, names state laws. Federal laws do that. Councils usually don't do that. Changing the holiday's name and the personnel code might affect 200, 250, 300 city employees, but there's 400 state reps with a dozen or more from Concord. And perhaps someone could put in a bill, this class or someone else, put in a bill with the legislature, which some classes have done, and we could get a law change up there where it really lies. If we're going back five centuries to judge Columbus and reevaluate his reputation and misdeeds, let's get some insight in history. Let's go back four centuries to the pilgrims in 1620. Two-thirds of those on the Mayflower didn't survive two years, and the remainder probably only survived because of the help of the Indians and their good graces. But let's move forward closer to home in Concord. 1746, only 275 years ago, about halfway back to Columbus's time, early Concord settlers built stockades and garrisons around their homes to protect themselves from Indian attacks. When these occurred, neighbors also went to these garrisons for the safety. There's a fairly prominent sketch of the Walker House with a stockade around it up in the historic district. Early Concord settlers and Indians had their problems and didn't get along. There were raids, skirmishes, people were killed on both sides. I'm not here to place blame or point fingers. One of these incidents is memorialized with a monument in front of Concord Hospital. We've all driven past there hundreds of times. I never stopped there till recently. Let me savor the trip and read you the inscription on it. "This monument is in memory of Samuel Bradley, Jonathan Bradley, Obadiah Peters, and John Lufkin, who were massacred August 11, 1746, near this spot. Erected 1827 by Richard Bradley, son of Honorable John Bradley and grandson of Samuel Bradley." There's also a gravestone up in the north cemetery noting that these people were killed by Indians. There were also Indian wars off and on from the 1690s to 1763, when the French and Indian War ended. Some of you may also have heard of the Oyster River Massacre. There's a New Hampshire historical sign down there. Was also a Deerfield massacre. So if we're reevaluating the reputation and past misdeeds of various groups, let's consider all aspects, pluses and minuses. Hopefully, this proposed ordinance and discussion doesn't end up as which group, race, or nationality has been more victimized, is more deserving, or has less misdeeds than the other. I think the council needs to be mindful of Concord's history and not dishonor the forefathers or perhaps dishonor them. So I speak about changing it, but if change is there, perhaps we can take the high road. Let's call it All Peoples' Day. Let's honor nationalities that now make up Concord: Indians, English, French, Irish, Greek, Nepalese, Bhutanese, and the others, too many more, too numerous to mention. But I think that would be the high road, and that would truly get us out of... We had our election last week. We shouldn't have an election here. It shouldn't be viewed as the Italians versus the Indians, but how do we commemorate all the people coming here? And I'm told Afghanis, Afghanistans are coming here, and I came here in the '70s, and it's a much different community. If we want to be a welcoming community, let's make it All Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We do have a question. Councilor Rice-Hawkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russell. I was curious, could you share with us what your favorite positive indigenous landmark is in Concord?
I'm not sure there are any, which is probably the point of your question.
It is. Thank you, sir.
So perhaps we should put some up and commemorate, but we also have others that are here, certainly the Irish, the French, and many others. I mean, my middle name is Anthony. I'm of Irish heritage, English heritage. My best man was born in Rome. My mother-in-law was born in Old Town, Maine, right next to the Penobscot Indian Reservation. So I'm fully versed on both sides, but I think it's time to honor all people and not make an election between one group or the other. And maybe this class that came up or that's here tonight can put a bill into the legislature and have some action over there, but...
If I may? I was just curious, Mr. Russell, have you ever attended Welcoming Week or the multicultural festival in Concord?
I've been by, but I haven't attended it. I mean, should I have? Does that take my truthfulness around?
Oh, I would just encourage you to. I think that you would find that, in my experience in communications, that many of the individuals who are part of those celebrations are in full support of this initiative. So I was curious if you'd had a chance to experience that.
Well, when I came to town, I grew up in Lynn, Massachusetts. 10% to 15% of my classes were multi-ethnic. When I came to town, I think there were five black families in town, and I knew three of them from the '70s. So, you know, I can stand there with anybody else, Mel Bolden and others. There was a man, Bacon Ruggs. There was also a man who was the head of the Chamber of Commerce when it used to be right next to Merrimack County Savings Bank. So I'll stand toe-to-toe with being out there and going to a multicultural fest. I don't think it changes my view.
And...
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, and welcome.
Hello.
Hey. It's been a while. It's good to see you.
Yeah, a long time. My name is Rosemary Lanier. I've been a resident of Concord for, I guess, 42 years, something like that. I comment supportive changing the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think it is long past time to recognize the people who have lived on this land for thousands of years and their cultures and values. And I think it is way past time to acknowledge the attacks on indigenous people, the ill-treatment, attempted genocide, and disrespect of them. I've heard some people say it would be upsetting for Italian-Americans to get rid of Columbus Day. As a second-generation Italian-American, I do not want my culture and heritage symbolized by Christopher Columbus. I understand he was used as a way to help Italian-Americans become more accepted in U.S. society. However, praise of Columbus is inappropriate if you learn the real facts about him. For one thing, he never actually stepped foot on what is the USA today. Secondly, and more importantly, he was a terrible and violent man who caused the death of many people. I think a much better way to celebrate and honor the good parts of a culture and heritage would be participating in Concord's multicultural festival. We probably all grew up with the myths of Columbus. It is way past time to learn the real facts about him and the destruction of cultures and peoples he caused. Europeans came to this country, ironically in many cases, to escape discrimination and wound up discriminating against indigenous people. They decided that their culture was superior and didn't really understand or respect the culture of people who had been living on this continent for thousands of years, who had societies that were well-developed and trade routes that ranged from shore to shore. A first step in showing respect and honoring equality and justice will be to rename Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I hope that we would not stop there. We need to ensure that factual history is taught, and that we need to communicate with each other, respect each other, ask how we can learn about each other, appreciate each other, and support each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions? Tina? Good to see you. Be well. At this time, we'll recognize Dennis Soucy. Dennis Soucy.
My name is Dennis Soucy. I live in Clark, New Hampshire, and I thank you for the invite, Mr. Mayor, Jim, Mr. Manager Tom, Madam Janice, and all the councilors here. They all look wonderful, and I'm opposed to Indigenous Peoples' Day. First of all, all the stuff going on, the wokeness about taking away everything that people work hard for. And like me, I'm Catholic, pro-life, and I'm a very simple man, and I like simple things. And most people in my age group of 70 and over don't like change. In other words, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Simple as that. But Charlie Russell said a lot of good things that I'm not going to repeat, but the whole thing of it is, like, my Meme and Pepe came from Canada in 1912, and my mother's family came from Austria about the same time. We all lived in the Milliards of Manchester. I was born and brought up in the Milliards of Manchester. We all worked hard. My family was able to buy property by the police station in Manchester. And my grandparents had a garage full of immigrants living out in the garage that my grandmother and my aunt and uncles all took, my mother, all took care of, think nothing of it. Fine, it never bothered me a bit. When I was in the military, I dealt with a lot of black people, a lot of Hispanic people, some of the best of my friends. It never bothered me one bit. Now they want to take away statues of Abraham Lincoln and Thomas Jefferson and George Washington. Now I hear that in Washington, D.C., they want to take down all the veteran monuments pertaining to the war. I mean, come on now. When is this going to end? I mean, we have to put a stop to it. And, you know, it's like every time you turn around, they want to take something away from you, and there's really no reason for it. Why can't we all work together, love all people, respect all people? And, you know, it's like every time you turn around, they want to take something away from you, and there's really no reason for it. Why can't we all work together, love all people, respect all people? Like Charlie had a good idea what he said, and so I'm not going to repeat any of that, but I'm just, I'm not for a lot of things that are going on. I like the old way of doing things. I mean, what more could you ask for, you know? And I just hope they don't do anything about taking anything away for Veterans' Day, which is coming up. My father's name is on the plaque in Victory Park in Manchester on the Veteran Memorial for World War II. They better not touch that monument or take anything down because my dad's name is on that monument, and I'll duct tape myself to that monument before they take it down. My wife and I are going to be buried at the veteran cemetery in one of the column barrens. Are they going to take away the veteran cemetery from us? Now what about Hannah Dustin? You've got her in Bosque and overlooking Pennacook coming into Ward 1. Does anybody really know the whole story on Hannah Dustin and what happened to her? Granted, Christopher Columbus, 529 years ago, nobody, I don't think, was here back then, so no one really knows what he was like. Why can't we forget and forgive? There's been a commercial on TV, and it's been on the internet, of an eight-year-old Japanese girl on TV in the ad, and it says, "Can we blame her for Pearl Harbor?" I don't think so. And then there was a 10-year-old boy, I think he was either Vietnamese or Korean, saying, "Can we blame this boy for Vietnam and the Korean War?" How can we? Why don't we forget about all that stuff, all work together, and bring it all? Like Charlie had a good word for it, Regular People's Day, but I just don't like the idea of changing things. I mean, they're just taking away everything that we worked. We're not going to have no history left for our children. How are they going to learn? What about Lyndon Johnson? What about George Wallace? What about Congressman Haley Boggs, Cokie Roberts's father? He went missing in a plane crash and never found him. Now, you probably know as well as I do, Lyndon Johnson used the N-word about 100 times a day, and nothing was ever said. Are they going to take down anything for Lyndon Johnson? What about George Wallace and Robert Byrd? They were Ku Klux Klan people. They have monuments up, and I think they even named a bridge after one of them. Are they going to pull that bridge down now? I don't think so. So why do we have to change any more in America than what we already have? I'm just, I want history.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You lost me a duct tape.
I would just, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Soucy. That was a lot, so I would love to follow up with you more later, but I do want to say a couple of things. I think that you share some of the same anx that other folks in this room do. Things changed, right? There was a thriving Indigenous, you know, people and land and culture here, and that changed when colonizers came in and murdered and raped and pillaged. And I think that those are really important things. I think you share a lot of the same frustration about things changing, that you grew up with one history, and now you've been confronted with maybe more information than you had before. So I would love to continue this conversation with you at another point rather than in this forum, but I do want to say, I think you've been given some disinformation about the veterans monument, so let's talk after the meeting.
Where, D.C.?
D.C. and elsewhere. And thank you for your service.
I heard Elizabeth Warren wants you to get rid of them.
Okay. You know what? That's great. This is meant to hear from the public and ask some questions, and that's what we're going to do. You're next.
Good evening and welcome.
Hi, my name is Mason. I'm a senior at Proctor Academy, and I hadn't planned on speaking, but...
What's your last name, Mason?
Gerster.
Thank you.
Growing up, I went to a school where, you know, every year from seven years old to 14 years old, every October, there would be a day where we would have a long weekend. And around that day, every year, we would have lessons about Columbus, you know, the classic, "In 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue," and those kind of rhymes. And for the first 14 years of my life, he was portrayed to me as a hero, and I feel like, in that sense, my education has failed me because for 14 years, I accepted this long weekend as something that was good for me, as something I was celebrating, something that I should be proud of. And upon learning about, you know, now going to Proctor, I'm fortunate enough to have an education that gives me more than just one side of the story, you know, about what actually happened. And without that, I would probably still be celebrating Columbus Day as Columbus Day. So in changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, not only are you recognizing that Indigenous people were here long before Columbus Day, long before Columbus set foot on land that isn't even technically American, but, and also that he thought was India, but you're also recognizing that Indigenous people deserve reparations and recognition for all that we put them through and for all that Christopher Columbus was responsible for, you know. There are so many endangered and extinct languages that are part of Native American culture that we've lost and that people that live on reservations and that Indigenous people have lost because of what Columbus did. He started something that has effectively never stopped. You know, the genocide that he committed didn't stop there, and it continued through many different ways: boarding schools, quota laws, all that. I'm happy to answer questions. I don't know if people have any, but...
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Tina, appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, Concord City Council members, my friends. I hope most of you recognize me. My name's Ken Georgievitz. I live on Mountain Road, and I've been a resident of Concord for nearly 40 years, a resident of Concord talking to my elected officials. I helped elect you. Half this room did not. That bothers me. I would also like to also thank the mayor for bringing this topic up first so that everybody can get addressed quicker than being here till 11 o'clock tonight. I appreciate that. Also, I want to take advantage of this opportunity to speak to this group on behalf of the Fire Department. On 10 May, I think most of you know my son had a house fire, and Concord Fire Department was there, and they acted quickly and appropriately. This is what I expect. This is why I've been paying for, and they delivered. So I want to say to this group, compliments to the Concord Fire Department, so keep that in mind. To the subject at hand, if you saw the movie A Few Good Men with Tom Cruise, he says, "Private Santiago is dead, and he shouldn't be." The law isn't about innocence or guilt, it's about assigning blame. I've heard a lot of people trying to assign blame tonight for what may have happened 500 years ago. You can rewrite history, but rewriting it can't change it. You cannot apply 21st century rules, cultures, and norms to 15th century people. Did Columbus do what has been done for millennia? Maybe. I wasn't there. Whether it was Christopher Columbus or somebody else proving the world wasn't flat, we were bound to find out. My woke friends would say changing a name or taking down a monument will make everything all right. I disagree. The fact is, it will do nothing to fix what may have been done centuries ago. It will only create discord today. And to what end? What will change as this proposal to change names is enacted? How does this change actually change anything? Are you that self-righteous to think it will? Is this the hill you want to die on? Surely, there are more important issues in our city today that I would much rather see this body addressing than something from 500 years ago. If you want Indigenous Peoples' Day, okay, no problem with that. Pick a day. But no matter how woke you try to be, it is what it is. Don't try to make yourselves feel better and claim victory for just changing a name. If so, you've just wasted the time of the people who elected you to be here to solve today's problems, not 1492's. Thank you, and I urge you to just table this and leave it as it is. And I can't believe I actually agree with Charlie Russell.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you for coming out tonight. We'd like to go next.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Tom.
Go on.
Janice, Council. I come here tonight as a...
You want you to introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Donald Jewell. I live here in Concord in the South End. I grew up in Pennacook, and I come here on behalf of my father mostly, I think, tonight because he was born in Canada, and his mother was full-blooded Abenaki Indian. And he, unfortunately and sadly, she left him at birth, and his father, my grandfather, came down, come to America to the Amoskeid Mills to earn money because he wasn't, he was struggling up there. And so my father was raised by his grandparents, my great-grandparents. And my dad was born in 1898, and back then, I mean, mode of transportation up there was wagon and horses, and sometimes they would go to Montreal to do trading and stuff and what they had to do, and they would leave him on the reservation up there. And so he would be there for weeks at a time. So he was 63 when I was born, so I learned a lot about Indian culture and just, it was in his blood, and he was half-Indian, and I'm a quarter-Indian, and he was quite proud of that heritage, and he was quite grateful because he was taken care of when both of his parents had left him. He came down here in 1912. He followed his father down here, and they both became employed at Hoyt Electric in Pennacook because my grandfather had moved up from Manchester and got a job there, and then my father got a job there, and he worked there for 50 years, and then retired and started his own machine shop in Pennacook. And, but my point here is, I know that my father shared with me a lot of the resentment that he had about, from what he had learned from being on the reservation and just from other Indian people that he knew, about the loss that Indigenous people had suffered by the colonization of America, by England. And so, I mean, he sometimes would be, you know, he was generations ahead of me because I was, he was older when I was born. So I just think that I know how they suffered, and I know from his own personal testimony. But on the other hand, I do believe that history is important, and it's important to keep it in context. And I do think that what I have recently learned about the nature of Columbus and his conquest of this world, and he discovered America, I think is all important, but I think, you know, in light of what I've learned, that he exploited the Native American people tremendously, is not anything to be proud of or to celebrate. But on the other hand, I don't know that the right way to heal those wounds is to take something away that was established by F. Franklin Delano Roosevelt long ago. And I think that, I'm not sure that the message is right. I think it can, there's pros and cons, and there's pluses and minuses, and sometimes what does good does harm. And so my feeling is that what needs to be done, needs to be done at either the state or the federal level where it was created, and perhaps just as much as, I mean, I'm quarter-Indian, and I'm very proud of that, but I don't know that sometimes we just need to accept what's there and be at peace with that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We do have a question. Counselor Keach.
Just a comment. I just appreciate your comments so far tonight. You've been the most honest, incredible person that's come before us, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think everybody's been honest, and appreciate you coming out tonight as well. We'd like to go next. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, my name is Kelly Smock. I'm a junior at Proctor Academy, and I also didn't really plan on speaking tonight, so I'll keep this short, but I don't know if anyone in this room has read Cast by Isabel Wilkerson, but in her book, she speaks about how the oppression and caste system in Nazi Germany was inspired by the caste and oppression in America. And I think that we have a history of setting a very negative example, and changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day is an opportunity to set a positive example. That's all.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Tina? Thanks for coming out. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Erin Sandler. I am a resident and a voter here in Concord. I don't need to echo what's already been said, but I do want to let you know that I'm in support of changing this to the State Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day for the reasons that have been talked about. So I just wanted to make sure you all know that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you for the moment to testify. My name's Catherine Corkery. I live in Pennacook, and I am testifying as a resident of Concord and as my job part. But first, I'd like to speak as a resident. I live on High Street in Pennacook, and I am a descendant of Italian and Irish immigrants, I think the best of both worlds.
So am I.
There we go. We're everywhere. And I encourage this city to change the naming of the holiday for a number of reasons. Columbus, by his own account, killed and maimed and tortured and brutalized the people who lived on the island he named Hispaniola and Cuba. Columbus, under the flag of Spain, arrived in the Caribbean, not Concord, right, to provide long-term wealth for the monarch. And he was looking for gold, and he also, his arrival resulted in the transatlantic slave trade. One quote I wanted to share was of the Catholic priest who traveled with Columbus, and he later transcribed Columbus's travel journals. And he wrote, "There were 60,000 people living on this island, including the Indians." I'm not sure which island he was talking about, Cuba or Hispaniola at the time, but he continued. So that from 1494 to 1508... So, that from 1494 to 1508, over 3 million people had perished from war, slavery, and the mines. And he pondered, "Who in future generations will believe this? I myself, writing as a knowledgeable witness, eyewitness, can hardly believe it." This was not an accident. This wasn't a side hustle by Columbus, right? It was slavery and it was forced labor. And certainly, if Columbus were alive today, his actions would be compared to the ethnic cleansing of Bosnia. The despots, Idi Amin, responsible for killing 100,000 to half a million people, or Pol Pot of the Khmer Rouge who brutalized, starved and murdered between one and a half million and 2 million people in four years. Today, Columbus would be in jail or in hiding. He would not have a holiday. And I want to emphasize that the holiday cannot be separated from that brutality. It is, it is one in the same. Secondly, Columbus never came to Concord. We are not beholden to him. And thirdly, why can't we change? You know, I know, it's hard. I get that. I have trouble with change as well. But Concord is the home to Native people. We have place names. Pennacook, the Kentucky River, the Merrimack River, and other names that we've replaced with the Heights or Sewell's Falls or Garvin's Falls. But the Abenaki are still here. Columbus isn't here. Celebrating and embracing the history, this is the, all of the history. Pardon me. I'm never good with these things. Embracing all of the history of the land and the knowledge of the people invites all of us newcomers to build a future together. Secondly, I come to you as the chapter director of New Hampshire Sierra Club. The chapter supports the name change as a member of the New Hampshire Coalition for Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have raised awareness and built a community based on this very change. We share many of the values of our Indigenous partners and would like to promote that healing and with welcoming and celebrating those of Indigenous heritage. I call on the city of Concord and the council here to support the changing of the name to Columbus Day, of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day as a resident and an advocate. And I do have written testimony.
Appreciate the written testimony.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Ashley Hatcher Babladellas. I'm a member of the Concord community, Word 5. And I would like to start tonight, as some others have, by acknowledging that I live and work on the land of the Pennacook Abenaki people, folks who walked gently on the land many centuries before me. And I'm committed to learning about their history, their culture and their stories, and to share them with my own community, like we're doing tonight. As a resident, a parent of two young children, and an educator, I believe the city of Concord has an incredible opportunity and a responsibility to change the current holiday, Columbus Day, to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Christopher Columbus should not be a glorified hero. He and other colonizers were responsible for violence, death and destruction, as we've heard so much of tonight. That violence is relevant today and the Indigenous community in New Hampshire experiences trauma when our city and our state recognize and celebrate him. We have the opportunity to change the narrative, recognize the truth of our past and work to move forward in acknowledging the mistakes and pain. Our city has a chance to celebrate and honor Native people and their heritage. If we are truly committed to being a welcoming city to all, this change is necessary. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Before you go?
Yes.
So, the clerk can get it right for the minutes?
Oh, sure.
Would you mind just sharing your last name again?
It's Babladellas. I can spell it if you want.
Thank you very, very much. Actually, you know what? I apologize. What, I'm gonna do this. It's like exercising. We have a question, if you don't mind.
It's not a question. It's a statement of thank you. You and I had an email communication with regards to the state legislation and what state legislation active or non-active had occurred. And I'd asked that question several times of people that had written to the council. And I wanted to especially thank you because you were the singular person that answered that question. Thanks.
Sure. I had help from the community in answering, but yes, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Would like to go next.
Hello, councilmen and women. I am Johnny Mutkowski, M-U-T-K-O-S-K-I, very Polish. I am a Proctor Academy senior. And during this hearing, I feel as though we are falling into a trap, a trap of continuously letting one side take the entire pie. Perhaps it is not for one side to decide that Columbus is the good guy or that Indigenous people are the good guy. Perhaps we must come together and collectively create a union of acceptance of all people being able to commit great good and great evil. I think that is important, that we represent all people instead of one group of people in the effect that it has had on history. I believe that the great things that happened were the connection and the terrible things that happened were the general side. And I think that in order to properly represent history and to get a full side, you must represent all of that. And so, I agree with the idea of a Peoples' Day or a World Connection Day. Any questions?
See, not. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would like to go next. Anyone else? Here and then we'll go back there. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Abba Ramsey. I'm also a senior at Proctor. And I also didn't initially prepare anything, but after listening, it kind of made me start thinking. And I come from very deep southern Louisiana and I came up here for boarding school. And in Louisiana, the ideas are very different. And as I can say, is that ignorance is a prison. And I am very lucky to have gotten out of that prison and educate myself on the people around me and the struggles that they've been put through. And I think that one step of educating each other is by changing the name to Indigenous Peoples' Day and then furthering that education by reading about the struggles that people have been put through, not just back then, but today. It's still going on and we need to recognize that and stop invalidating everybody around us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thank you and thank you all for your service here. My name is Stephanie Vizano. I'm a resident of Concord. And I wanted to add a little bit of a different perspective than I've heard from some other folks, which is, I'm a therapist. And I, and my last name is Vizano. I'm super-Italian. I've never heard until this evening that apparently some Italians don't want the name changed from Columbus. And I am a therapist. I've never treated a disenfranchised Italian. I have treated several Native peoples and Indigenous peoples who have complex PTSD. And the Columbus Day name is one of the things that's really hurtful. It's one of the things that can make their symptoms worse. And even first from a plain old, like, business perspective, if you want to take that route with it, this is something that affects, it does affect people. And it's something where it's, I see that impact on the Indigenous and Native people that I have worked with, not on the Italian heritage people that I have worked with. And when people like myself come from a place of privilege and as we work towards equality and equity, it feels like something is being taken away from us because that privilege is being taken away so that others can have the same opportunities that I was given without, without working for it, frankly. And I think in the way that, sure, we can talk about things where many, many hundreds of years ago, but as far as us as role models, I think that we, you know, we teach our children, like, if you have hit someone or hurt their feelings, you apologize. And I think that this is an opportunity for the council to step up and help show that this is a, forgive the turn of phrase, but a mea culpa, that yes, we're here to recognize some of these things that previously have been overlooked and we don't want to do harm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone have a question from council council?
I heard you say you've recognized white privilege and I'm very happy to hear that. When you were younger, were you aware of white privilege?
How much younger? Yes and no. When I was in fifth grade was when I was made aware of white privilege.
Because most of us, white people, are not aware of it until we begin to educate ourselves. And it's a lifelong process, so I commend you for that work.
Counsel Mack.
I'd like to thank you for sharing and what you're doing to help people who may be struggling, who are dealing with PTSD. That's huge. Thank you for your service.
Anybody else? Appreciate you coming out tonight. Thanks much.
Thank you.
I'll just remind everybody, we're gonna ask questions now and solicit information. Anyone else wish to testify?
Hi, I'm Callie Bryant. I live in Hockington, New Hampshire, and I'm proud to live in a community that...
But you love Concord though, right?
I do. I do. I'm a root parent.
And when you want to shop, you shop in Concord, right?
I do. I do.
And your parents probably do too, right?
Yes. But I'm proud to live in a community that does recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I grew up going to Hockington Public Schools and even before it was recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day, I praised the community for doing a great job of educating us about the Indigenous history around us. We live right on the Kentucky River and we are all aware of our Abenaki history. And I think, living in a community that does recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, I feel so lucky in that, sorry, in that I am educated about the true history surrounding Columbus Day. And with learning about the Native history, we did learn about Columbus and the true history surrounding it, but it wasn't praised in the way that a lot of communities do praise him. And I just, I feel lucky to live in a community that recognizes Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I feel that Concord, being a much larger city than Hockington, should also embrace Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
We do have a question.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Would you believe that there are some parents on this council who also hope to raise their children in a community that also acknowledges our true history, embraces everyone?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Appreciate. Anyone else? Okay. Remember, if somebody else has said what you'd want us to say, then you don't have to... Welcome.
Hi. My name is Trinelli Whitehead. I come from the Rosebud Indian Reservation in South Dakota. I am also a second-year senior at Proctor Academy. I am here with my younger brother Yamini in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day. I come before you, not with any history, but only as today. I come to share that our language is alive, our culture is alive, and that as a Native American, we are here and we are listening. I come before you to thank you for listening and to thank those behind me for speaking on their beliefs, even for those who aren't for Indigenous Peoples' Day, who are simply here to voice their desire for equality. I just felt that as a Native American, I would come before you and just thank you guys for your time and this community's time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak? Anyone else? Welcome.
Howdy, folks. Um, wow. Ooh, I have some, a couple words. So, my name is Stephen Kitter. I'm a lifelong resident of Concord, New Hampshire. I went through K through 12 school here in Concord, New Hampshire. And unfortunately, my education wasn't as good as the, as some of the students sitting behind me. The things I learned about Indigenous people were that they lived in wig bombs and that they were the price we had to pay for Western expansion. And it didn't stop there. You have boarding schools, some Indigenous children kidnapped practically from their families to be indoctrinated into whiteness and to Christianity. You then have the, you have ICWA, which is the Indigenous Children Welfare Act, which is being challenged to this day, which tries to put a stop to the removal of Indigenous children from their tribal communities. I come to you because this is an important holiday for me, not because I identify as Indigenous, but because I know the atrocities carried out by people who look like me, family members of mine, that they inflicted upon Indigenous people because they thought that that's what had to happen. I'm here to hopefully right that wrong. And I think recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day over Columbus Day in the city of Concord, my hometown, is an incredible first step because that doesn't erase the incinerated treaties or the millions of bodies that we step on to this day of people who were unable to live or exist as they are. So, I just thank you so much and I really want this to happen, I guess. And if anyone has questions, I'm more than willing to answer any questions y'all have.
I do have a question.
Go for it.
Anybody else? So, do we get the minutes right? Could you just repeat the name, please?
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't say my name. Whoops, sorry.
You did. You did. You spoke really fast.
Oh, I talk real fast. I mumble all the time. So, it's Stephen L. Kitter, K-I, D as in dog, D as in dog, E-R.
Thank you very much.
I'm not kidding. Um...
Anything else? Who else would like to speak? Anyone else? Okay? Nope? Okay, one and then two. There we go. Welcome. Hello.
My name is Jayden Williams. I'm a Proctor freshman. I'd just like to speak in my support of Indigenous Peoples' Day. My grandmother was Native American. I'm nowhere near New Hampshire, but I felt it was important for me to speak about it.
You love New Hampshire too, though, right?
I do love New Hampshire. I'm kind of scared right now.
You know what? It's you and me. Just talk to me.
It's you and me.
Talk to me.
It feels important for us to kind of embrace change. We, I don't think we should stay in our old ways. I'm kind of, it's for a loss of words, but...
It's okay. Take your time. Relax.
I'm just really in support of, I'm really in support of change. I know some people may want it to stick in the old ways and that's totally fine, but it's just kind of, over time, you gotta embrace change for what's better. You can't just, you can't let things become incomplacent. You can't keep...
Take your time, relax.
I'm just really in support of, I'm really in support of change. I know some people may want it to stick in the old ways and that's totally fine, but it's just kind of over time, you gotta embrace change for what's better. You can't just, you can't let things become in complacency, you can't keep it the same way as it is. And I don't know, that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
I don't think there should be any questions, but
You have one question.
What person doesn't want questions?
I'm sorry, how old are you?
I am 15 years old as currently.
Fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Good job.
Yeah, you've got a tremendous amount of confidence to come up and speak your piece.
I am very scared right now. Believe me, at fifteen, I would not be there. So I'm just saying.
I can attest that he never would have been there.
Thank you so much for coming. Would you say that if you know better, you should do better?
I mean, we're taught every day of our lives to live it as best as we can, so why wouldn't you?
Thank you.
Somebody stood up out here. Welcome. Should I say welcome back, I think?
Why? Why need a back? In Delaware sin Denise Pulio Sagamaskwa, with Delaware sin Paul Pulio Sagamo Kawasaki Band of Pennecook Abenaki People, Nio Na Aian Orana Kunipi. Hello friends, my name is Denise Pulio and I'm the head female speaker of the Kawasaki Band of the Pennecook Abenaki People. And this is Paul Pulio, head male speaker and chief of the Kawasaki Band. We are located at Orana Kunipi, which translates to the place of the narrowing waters now known as Alton, New Hampshire. That is where we are currently headquarters. Where we are today is the heartland of our Pennecook Territory. And as speakers of the Pennecook, I'll allow my husband here to take over.
This is Pennecook. Before you guys named it Concord, this was all one contiguous, a large village and it may have been in the thousands of people living here. And this would be before 1620. I feel compelled because of my age and I'm an educator as well. I'm in my mid seventies and I've seen a lot of change and I've seen, you know, I was brought up in the bad paradigm of the school systems back in the fifties and sixties and it, you know, Columbus sailed in blue in 1492. All we got for history. We really didn't get a very good history of what happened here in New England. Then everything jumps to 1620. As an educator, I'd like to like at least frame a few things that are misconceptions. In the 1400s, the Vatican created apal bulls, which were designed to keep the royals from killing one another and divide the entire world that they didn't know about yet between the royals. And as they put it, they were going to divide the world up between the princes of Christianity and to enslave and then take the resources of those people that were not Christians and either convert them to Christianity or the other alternative. And Columbus was just a man of his time, as some people say. But to fund that whole process, the Spaniards didn't have enough money. So they persecuted the Jewish population on, in the Iberian Peninsula and drove all, took all the Jewish property to fund their exploration. The royals were always looking for gold and resources. And this didn't change anything. You know, I listened to veterans talk about, oh, the savagery of, you know, war and all that stuff. There were seven wars fought right here in New Hampshire, starting from 1600 to 1812. We call them the Seven Abenaki Wars. They weren't our wars. These were European wars where French, Spanish, and other groups were fighting for these resources. We did not have an option in these warfares. 16, you know, in 1600s, we were barely surviving because of disease and other things that put pressures on us. People ask, well, didn't you own the land? Well, the concept of land ownership was really a royal construct from Europe. We didn't understand that and people will say, well, you must have gotten this land from somewhere. Well, we've dated it back to 13,000 years ago.
We were always here.
The state archaeologists and us worked together in Berlin and up in the Jefferson area. We've proven we were here when the glacier was receding. So there wasn't anything about ownership or taking somebody else's land. There were people living here and were descended, so those people, a paleo people, a hunter-gatherer, people that didn't, you know, understand land ownership like the royals did. So let's just wipe that whole idea of land ownership and we stole it fair and square or we deal with you guys to try to get it negotiated. We've looked at deeds like the Wilright deed out of Exodus and there were frauds. There were, these things were constructs created by the colonial people to justify the land ownership that the royals were challenging at different times. So this whole New England area was divided up between royals and there were always these conflicts. Then we talk about people like Richard Waldron over in Dover. Slavery actually started in this continent by his actions. He was the first one to gather slaves, indigenous slaves off the coast of New Hampshire and Maine, sold them to the Barbados and Azores. And slavery was started right here in New Hampshire. So we've got, we've got something good to say about that. We started slavery right here. Columbus started it and started the Atlantic slave trade as well. And after the Spanish learned how slave trade worked so well, the English jumped in and the rest is history and we went through slavery all the way up through the Civil War. So end of that discussion, the barbarism of Columbus was well documented. We don't have to argue about that. That's, that's not altering history. That's just like laying the facts on the table. Now, when it comes to these wars, Abenaki fought in all these wars. And we didn't fight for a political principle. We fought to protect these homelands, just like we do today. We're fighting not for a principle, but to protect our families and these lands that we live in. If you can get that in your head, you can take all the partisan politics out of it and throw it away. Because when my father went to war, he was in the Army Eighth, flew with Jimmy Stewart, you know, he bombed Berlin, he did all those missions, well decorated veteran. He did not fight that for a political principle. He fought that principle to protect this homeland. So enough said about warriors, veterans, and monuments. In this state, we were under severe pressure when everything hit the fan, as they say, and monuments being torn down. The first thing we saw happening was the monument here, Hannah Dustin, was going to get torn down. The indigenous community wanted that blown up so quick, it was like, it swept like wildfire. We had to sit down with the state, we met with the
Hannah Dustin descendants, Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation. We said, we gotta save the monument because if we destroy that, then there's one more landmark that's gone, you'll never hear about what happened here. And there was a rich history here in Concord. What we have identified is Hannah Dustin knew her captus. Does anybody know that in this room? No, probably not. She knew that.
Yes.
You do know that?
Yes, sir.
They came from Lancaster. They were Christian Indians. It's been well documented. He was taught to pray in the English way, but when he, he fled King Philip's War, he moved up here, up into this region. He said to Hannah Dustin, I used to pray in the English way, but I found it most unsatisfactory. Now I pray in the French way. And he made her say a prayer three times a day while in captivity. None of that ever comes out in any narrative. It's always talked about the ten warriors that she killed and the savagery of her baby being killed. And yet, they don't talk about the fact that Hannah Dustin's sister was convicted of It doesn't say that she did, but look at what you're looking at here in history. You don't want to keep on portraying the wrong history. We want to re-narrate the Hannah Dustin monument to give a fuller picture of it. We don't want to take it down. We'd like to memorialize the ten that were killed there. So the monument argument, we're not about taking monuments down. We're not talking about revising history. We know the history's out there, you just gotta make it public. And that's part of our education process. That's what we do almost full time, is talk about this. If I was here with a roundtable of you, we'd be here for an hour and I'd go step by step how all this happened and what was going on. It's not the place for it. I mean, all these students, and I really congratulate the students for stepping up. It's a great public experience. I congratulate you all for being here. This is what the leadership of our country should be. Younger people that are willing to take a stand, stand up and say something.
So with all that being said, we'd like to take an opportunity to answer questions here from the council tonight in order to help make this vote a smoother transition for you all.
If you don't know, we've already gone through the state legislature, two sessions, and it was always like one vote difference and it's been kind of gridlocked. And we've been doing the grassroots movement. And Dover, Durham were right there. Durham in particular was right on the spot and they were, they jumped up.
First in the state.
First in the state.
Okay.
We could take questions. It's probably better.
Great idea. Thank you very much. Counselor Kessner has a question.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm impressed with your, your knowledge of history, the thoroughness of your knowledge. And I'm wondering if you could talk to us a little bit about the code breakers in World War II? The Native American code breakers?
Well, you know, everybody gives credit for the Navajo and others, but I think from what we can gather, there are other tribal groups that also did it. I think the Iroquois, you know, the Mohawks were involved. I mean, everybody makes it sound like it was just the Navajo code talkers, but if you had a group during World War II, especially if you're in the Pacific theater, the idea that the Japanese didn't understand indigenous languages at all, I think the Germans were a little more sophisticated and that would have been an issue. But I think every group, if you had a platoon which had indigenous makeup, and oh, by the way, the greatest number percentage wise of people in the military have always been BIPOC. People don't give credit. Even the Civil War, there were large numbers of black people, large numbers of indigenous people fighting for every cause, everything from, you know, King Philip's War on, indigenous people have been in these battles. So I think the idea of code talkers is important, but it's just like everything else, it's warfare. You're trying to figure out a way of communicating. And it goes back to colonial days. I got fascinating stories about how the English made codexes trying to keep us from learning what they were sending for missives. Because we knew English, French, and Latin by the mid 1700s. And if we carried mail for them, they wanted to make sure that we didn't translate it to see what they were up to. I can give you stories, anecdotal stories that are just fascinating.
Well, I met a code breaker once and I was very impressed about their role in World War II.
Counselor Jeppe.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did not know your father flew with Jimmy Stewart. My father-in-law flew with Jimmy Stewart too. We'll have to talk about that sometime.
Yep.
It's been, to my question, it has been mentioned here that the action, any action by this city council would be fairly symbolic in that this is a state holiday, state federal holiday, and as you've said, you've been in the trenches in the State House trying to have it changed. But what I wanted to ask was, in that regard, could you talk to why it is still important to you and to the Native American community in New Hampshire, for whom I think you speak, that this kind of action be taken at the city level?
For us as a people, it's important to have truth in education. As a nation, our history has been morphed to promote a dominant culture and dominant societal ways. And cultures like ours have been minimalized in order for them to maintain their typically economic goals. It's important for indigenous peoples to be noticed and to have the genocide of Columbus recognized for what it is. Columbus is not a hero. We need to take stock in who we acknowledge as heroes in this nation and who we uplift and emulate. I don't think I want my children to be like Columbus. And I don't know if any of you want your children to be like Columbus either, but that's, I would like to think that my child will, will benefit society versus demolish it. So it's, it's a matter of us as a community of what we decide we want to honor and uplift. And I think honoring all the contributions that indigenous people have not only made, but all the suffering that we've endured over the last 500 years, is a step in that direction.
We recently did a panel for the Episcopal Church with Paula Savio, who is an Italian scholar. She's a professor at UNH. And she, she put the Italian perspective on it and she, she's just, she couldn't believe that, you know, that the Italian community is still honoring the Columbus narrative when we already heard, you know, Italy wasn't really a nation-state until 1860s or so. They were all city-states. He was from Genoa. He was a mercenary. He was wandering around from country to country looking for money to go and do his exploration. Paula was very clear that Italians don't consider him a hero. They'd rather think of Leonardo da Vinci or Galileo or somebody else. If you're going to honor the Italians, they have so many rich scientists and scholars that could be honored as opposed to somebody who can be, could be considered the father of the Atlantic slave trade. I mean, he started it. Nobody figured that out until he started taking slaves from the Caribbean. And then they went to Africa and then, then all of a sudden, you know, what happened to this country? So, yeah, she was very clear that there's a misconception in the Italian community that they have to protect Columbus Day when in fact, they should be trying to push the agenda to come up with a better honorable person that contributed to, to the world society as a whole. And Columbus is not the person. If you know the history about it, if you know the history of Columbus Day, started in the Civil War, you mean, you can do your own research. It gets very convoluted. It was to pacify people. It wasn't an honoring thing.
Thank you, Counselor Knight.
Thank you, Your Honor. I recognize your desire to have Indigenous Peoples' Day and a recognition, you know, in particular for the Native Americans who lived in this particular part of the community. That being said, are you opposed to changing Columbus Day to Italian American Day or Italian Heritage Day or something more inclusive that we've heard this evening such as Cultural Heritage Day? Are you opposed to those nomenclatures?
Well, the issue at hand is, this is already something in motion. This is a train that's going down the track and it's going, you know, at a certain pace. And it's been, this was a national movement to change Columbus Day. We're not unique here in New Hampshire. I mean, this is, this has been going on all over. There's another movement in Canada that says let's honor all indigenous people, but that becomes an issue with our country because we did not honor a lot of the things during the Bush administration of 2010 because there was an agenda that they were trying to get reconciliation for all indigenous people, not just North America, but South America and Africa and all that stuff. So I, I think any effort to try to come up with a hybrid is going to be, it's just, it's more ridiculous than what it is now. Columbus is not celebrated. Nobody takes and eats pizza on
I guess let me try to clarify. I'm trying to take the politics out and I'm not trying to come up with a hybrid. It was kind of a fairly simple, there's no reason why we can't honor Indigenous Peoples' Day and have a day. And one of my follow-up questions is, is there a specific date in the Abenaki calendar that is a festive day that would be celebrated? But that being a second question, it was really whether or not you're opposed to something such as Cultural Heritage Day in lieu of Columbus Day. And I didn't get a straight answer, so I just wanted to kind of get you on record for that.
I'll respond to your answer.
Please.
So my, my response to that answer is you're not changing the narrative.
We won't change the narrative if we change it to Indigenous Peoples' Day either, so.
Well, actually you are because you're going to be encouraging the education, the spreading indigenous education. By changing it to Italian Heritage Day, you're not changing the narrative because at the core of all of this is the doctrine of discovery. And that is the basis of acknowledging Columbus because that's what he sailed under, was the, to Christianize or annihilate any lands that they came upon.
So no to, no to Italian American Heritage Day?
Yes.
What about to Cultural Heritage Day or multicultural day? How about that?
We would not be in favor of that.
And is there a reason? Because I thought it was actually a very good, proud
This is about getting rid of the doctrine of discovery. And Columbus is once again the poster child of the doctrine of discovery. And so if you want to truly change the narrative, then you need to address the problem. And in raising the indigenous perspective and indigenous culture that was here prior to the doctrine of discovery is what's at risk here. We're not here to support the doctrine of discovery. Changing it to Italian Heritage Day would be once again, still maintaining that same, you know, colonial narrative. And, and raising the indigenous perspective and indigenous culture that was here prior to the doctrine of discovery is what's at risk here. We're not here to support the doctrine of discovery. Changing it to Italian Heritage Day would be once again, still maintaining that same, you know, colonial narrative.
I was talking about multicultural, a recognition of all cultures, not.
And once again, why do we have to acknowledge all cultures and not the original inhabitants of this land?
I, I said we could have, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to have an argument.
I'm asking you a question. You're pushing the agenda.
No, no, no. I said absolutely, I, I can appreciate and recognize the importance of recognizing, recognizing indigenous peoples. The question is, were you opposed to having a Cultural Heritage Day? And I think.
You can pick another day for that.
So going back to the other question I had, is there a day in the Abenak calendar that is a day of celebration that would be preferable to Columbus Day or whatever we're calling it now to this evening, the second holiday in October? Is there another date that's more meaningful to the, to, to the local indigenous peoples?
Considering we're discussing the genocide of our people and raising the awareness of that, I would say no.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I could, I could answer it a little more clearly.
You know, I think he got his answer though.
Okay.
Thank you. I think what I'm hearing you say is bringing to awareness indigenous people and our need to begin to explore that and learn and educate ourselves about the inequity. You know, we talk about equality. It's not the same as equity.
Correct.
And equity is, I could give an example, if a teacher asks the students to write their name on the blackboard, and that's equality. Like she asked them all to do the same thing, but some of them weren't tall enough. Equity is lowering the blackboard. And I think that's what we're talking about here is equity.
I think she said, would you believe?
Would you agree?
Yes.
Yep.
I agree.
Counsel Reese Hawkins.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Could you share with us what were some of the celebrations that happened in communities across the state who did celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day and what that meant to both you as individuals, but also to the community members who participated?
So what we did this year is we gifted the cities and towns that have already adopted Indigenous Peoples' Day tribal flags. And so for the first time since colonials have stepped on these lands, our tribal flags were raised on Indigenous Peoples' Day in various locations throughout the state. And if Concord adopts Indigenous Peoples' Day tonight, we as a tribe will once again gift a tribal flag to the city of Concord to have, for your use whenever you have an indigenous event or whatever that comes up for you, for you to have.
To answer you more in detail, when we, when Durham did this, we, they, they doubled down and they had like a full month of indigenous programs. They brought in indigenous people from all over, all kinds of venues. We gave many, many lectures and it was an educational moment which lasted quite a while. And then that's been spread out and we've been doing that ever since. You know, any, we've done things here at the Merrimack Valley High School. We've given a couple, two or three presentations up there, different things. Awareness, we think education is our forte right now. We can't really change a lot of things in history, but we can at least talk about it and.
We have conversations.
Conversations. We say, you know, unless you have a conversation about the past, I mean, all, all the cliches about history are, the victors always write the history. The narrative from the past is actually what's going to be your future.
That's a great question.
And these aren't just cliches. This is what happens in the real political world. So we look at, education is very important. If you don't know where you came from, you're going to make mistakes and go forward. And we see that quite a bit.
Follow-up?
Yep.
Thank you. Would you agree that indigenous people celebrate indigenous people every day and that Indigenous Peoples' Day is really an opportunity for the wider community to recognize, learn about, and celebrate those who over time have been purposely marginalized or erased from our community as we sit in Concord that as a question I asked earlier, doesn't have a lot of visible symbols of the ancestral homeland and heritage of your people who have stored at this land for generations?
That was done by design. So, and that's why things like today and these discussions are so important. You know, to completely eradicate and erase the history of an entire population says something. And it's time that we change that. There, even in, you know, Western context, you know, books, there is enough about our history that we don't have to continue on this miseducated path that we're currently on. We can do better as a, as a community. We can do better as a nation. And unless we come up with a inclusive, unified past, we're never going to have an inclusive, unified future. And this is a step in that direction. Thank you.
Counsel Pierce.
Thank you very much. This is very enlightening. I do have a couple of quick questions. November, I believe, is Native American Heritage Month.
Yeah.
So there's, you have a month-long education curriculum that you're doing.
Yeah. If you, we have a indigenous collaborative here in New Hampshire called INHCC, Indigenous New Hampshire Collaborative Collective. This is a group of indigenous and non-indigenous working together to develop indigenous curriculum that's free to teachers and educators throughout the state. So we have been working on indigenous curriculum and you can find it at indigenousnh.com. This information is available year-round. It's not specifically just for November. And we are still adding additional educational units for all age levels. But yes, November is educational month, but once again, we still believe that this is about changing the narrative of the doctrine of discovery and about bringing some truth to history.
Okay. And just a quick follow-up, are you familiar with the Native American Guardians Association?
Yes, we are.
Who are they?
Native American Guardians Association, so the jury's out bluntly, where there's a lot of groups that are trying to figure out where they actually derive from. There's a lot of speculation that a lot of their funding came from the Washington Redskins owner, who was trying to maintain his team name and holidays and other events throughout the nation. They seem to be, I don't know. So I, all right, to get to the quick of it, I know that you've received the letter, you know, that was attached to an email that was put forward by a member of a Vermont tribe stating that they were in favor of maintaining Columbus Day. However, from our research, that individual seems to be speaking on his own accord. His tribe actually supports the change to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so I'm not really sure what is going on with that particular group, but they show up when it comes to mascot debates, they're showing up when it comes to Columbus Day. It seems they're showing up where, wherever we try to bring equity into society, they're popping up to try to stop us.
So you don't know who they are either?
Never met them.
Okay.
They're just an enigma.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're an enigma. That's right.
Counsel Kretve.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a question of semantics. Here in the city council, we are talking about putting a line through the name of Columbus Day on three ordinances, one regarding parking, one regarding our city employee holidays, and the other regarding the noise ordinance of construction. In Durham, they did a resolution. In Dover, they did a resolution. In Keene, they did a proclamation. By definition of these, a resolution says the city of Concord and all of its citizens resolve that we will celebrate the second Monday of October as Indigenous People's Day. Or the mayor and the council would make a proclamation that says all of the citizens of the city of New Hampshire would proclaim that the second Monday of October is Indigenous People's Day. Wouldn't you think it would be stronger to have a proclamation or a resolution and perhaps striking the line through Columbus Day to celebrate and to move the narrative in this city to support indigenous people?
I would say you'd do both.
Or all three.
Or all three? Yeah, I would say you'd do it all.
What is before us is the smallest of the three.
So then let's escalate.
Thank you.
Might as well do it while we're all here.
Great. Thank you both very much for coming out tonight. Really appreciate it.
Any other questions? And by the way, we don't have any holidays.
Right, that's surely a Western construct.
I, I didn't say holidays. It was, I actually said like a, a day of.
Celebration.
Celebration, you know, harvest day or something, you know, the harvest season.
Again, I want to thank you all for coming out.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
I didn't want to leave you hanging.
I appreciate it.
So we've been at this for about an hour and 45 minutes. We've had 25 people testify. If there's anybody out there who needs to testify so bad that they just won't sleep tonight, you're more than welcome to come out tonight. Otherwise, if you feel like your comments have been covered by someone else, then we can consider closing the hearing. Anyone else? I don't want to keep anybody up at night. All right. Now seeing anyone else, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clark, if you could read the next item, please.
Yes, it's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title I, General Code, Chapter One, Government Organization, Article 1-3, Miscellaneous Regulations Amending, Section 1-3-9 Ward Lines.
Okay. Mr. Mancher, do you want, or do you want me to do this?
It's yours. It's done so well.
So this item, item 38 is the redistricting. Now, as you all probably know, every 10 years, the census comes out and there's obligation here in the community, just like across the state, to go forth and look at particularly cities which have wards, to look at those ward lines to make sure that they are within the standard deviation of 10 percent, plus five, minus five. The city appointed a committee, tried to get a cross-section of everyone in the city to take a look at the maps so that it would reflect as equal representation as we possibly can get within the, within the wards. We tried to do this, there was a few principles that we stood by. One was we wanted to make sure we had a accessible polling location with each of the wards. We wanted to make, that keeps the clerk happy. We wanted to make sure that we, as equal representation, I said, we're respecting neighborhoods and like neighborhoods and such. So with that, the committee met three times. You have the recommendation, I believe, before you and it was posted online. Final recommendation was agreed to on last Thursday night at our last meeting. There may be a question as to why did it take so long to do it? The answer is typically in the past, the last two times I was involved, we had the, the numbers for our community back in July. So we then went ahead and we did our redistricting in August. And that way, when people signed up to run for city council in September, they knew exactly what ward they would be living in. Unfortunately, we did not get the census data until September, October. So the committee, following that, met three times and we came up with what we think is the most fair and equitable boundaries that we could, respecting polling locations, et cetera. With that, what I would like to do is recognize Mr. Durfee from our planning department, who was a just amazingly wonderful, valuable member of our group.
I know better.
Reason for that is that he was the one who operated the computer.
Yeah.
So what happens is, we were all given maps, we were with the census blocks and you can move census, you can't break a census block up, you have to move the whole census block. But Sam had the ability to actually manipulate those to so that you could actually see the effect of moving those boundaries and those numbers around. So with that, would it be?
We can go up on the screen with that?
Why, why don't we, whatever's easier. You know what would be fun? I would love to see Mr. Bahia be the, the Vanna White. Would you tell him where to point? We have a camera on him. So we're going to bring it up here if you don't mind.
The other map.
It's a great start.
So this year, you can do his review. So Mr. Durfee, how did I do in terms of explaining kind of the overall?
I couldn't have done it better. That's perfect.
That was too kind. All right. With that, why don't you take us through the various changes? And I'll just simply add before you start, that if I understand it correctly, Ward one, Ward two, Ward three, and Ward 10 gained in population in the city. Ward four was the, lost the most. And then Ward five, six, seven, eight, nine, all lost population.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, we have to shift the, the boundaries. Take us through.
Sure. So we have to adhere to boundaries on roadways or water bodies effectively. And we have to make this balance as 5% below or 5% above. And what that translates to is a loss or gain maximum of 220 people. Our 2020 population was just under 44,000, 10 wards. That put us at a target population of 4,398. So in doing so, we've adjusted some of our boundaries. Another important consideration was keeping the Merrimack Valley School District contained within Wards one and two for ease of ballot creation. So we have had some significant changes in geography. The biggest changes are, revolve around Ward five, Ward three, and Ward two. A lot of this was designed to bring population down from Wards one, two, and three, as you stated, they gained the most in the city, and try to bring some of that population down back into five, four, and seven. So the map you see there is, attempted that and we have reached, we're within our thresholds of the tolerances of that 5%. And I think it's a pretty good map.
Great. Who has questions for Mr. Durfee? Anyone? And everyone got chances to look at the maps beforehand, right? Okay. Well, that was probably the easiest we've had.
I, one, just one quick question. With the, the river along River Road, you talked about the center line of River Road for Ward two. Why not the middle of the river?
The center line is the middle of the river.
I mean, there are no houses. I'm just one, there are no houses between the other center line and the, and the river on River Road.
So.
But there are structures.
So you're talking about the center line of River Road or the river?
Center line of River Road.
Oh, that's a very good question. So our, our ward lines have to follow center lines of roads and water bodies. Because that is often where the census block lines are. However, on River Road, this will actually be easy if I point to the map. So there's a census block like this, on this being the south and east side of the Kintooka River, that does have some structures and some populations, about 17 people in that census block. You have to cut your ward lines at other water bodies or roadways. There's a very convenient census block right about here, but you can't cut it there because there is no other demarcation, no, no road, no water body. So we had to cut the line here at River Road. So that's why this sliver on the western side of River Road is in Ward one instead of Ward two, because otherwise, the next cut is Borough Road. And that population includes, or the census block includes this, and that population is too great to be absorbed into Ward two while still adhering to the tolerances.
So Brent gets the docks on the river off River Road?
Sorry, man.
Sorry, man.
Thank you for asking that question. I think, I think that's a great illustration of some of the detail that the community looked at. Anyone else? Anything else you want to add?
There was a document passed around of some proposed changes to the ordinance, just to make sure that the text follows the map exactly.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kenny, I apologize. Counsel and I.
I, I just wanted to say, thank you. I know this was a very difficult thing. So would you believe that I understand this is a very difficult challenge and thank you?
Thank you very much. Mr. Kenny, do you have anything you want to add?
No, Your Honor, just the ordinance that you received, and granted, as will be amended with the proposed edits that Sam put together here at the 11th hour, just note that we completed the drafts Friday and again, today going through it. And so. And so with these changes, we think that it's met the exact configuration that you see on the law. If you find any more changes, we don't expect, we will, but you'll get them through an ordinance proposal. We believe that it's ready with these changes for the Council to vote.
Thank you very much. Mayor Tim Bouchard.
Thank you. I just want to thank the committee and Mr. Durfee for all your hard work because now Ward nine has a polling place all around.
Mr. Mayor, and the next steps are, once the Council approves this, it goes to the House, the legislature?
So the House has, and both, actually the Senate as of today, has corresponded with all of the cities across the state, asking us to get them our changes as soon as we possibly can. The House has set a deadline, arbitrary deadline of the nineteenth of this month, and I believe they're meeting tomorrow. But we will, if, if adopted, it is an ordinance change, so we'll, we can do that tonight. We'll forward those to the legislature tomorrow, and they'll have these for their discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, really appreciate it. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who should testify on the redistricting ward lines. Welcome back.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Stuart Schweiger. I think this is a reasonably good product since it was put together in two weeks.
Can you repeat that? You're telling me I did something okay? It's so good to see you, you know?
But I'm disappointed. There are still a few things that I think are an issue. As in, for instance, we may not have had the final numbers until two weeks ago, but the planning department should have known where structures had been built and so forth. So we could have had an estimate of what might be happening and started working on this last summer like we usually do, knowing where, you know, more buildings are, and it would have taken only minor changes. And there's a couple of particular issues I'd like to bring up because, number one, there's this famous thing about the prison, that right now, if you live in Ward three, your vote is worth twice as much as anywhere else. Because half of the people, half of the people in Ward three are ineligible to vote. So in effect, it only takes half as many votes to, you know, elect a counselor in Ward three or whatever. And this is, right now, a problem that you can't solve because the prison is only one block and you can't split it. But I think the city should pass up the line for the, you know, officials that can change this. Can we put more blocks on the prison? And can we change the rules for ward boundaries such the prison can be split among more different wards? Because, you know, right now, the one-half is, at present, the voters in Ward three essentially get two votes. But the flip foot is, you know, as you may or may not know, there are winds of change. People feel that maybe prison inmates should be allowed to vote, in which case you would now have a majority of voters in Ward three being residents of the prison, in which case, you know, they could elect whoever they wanted for a counselor. That counselor would vote to defund the police department, whatever. So I think that, you know, trying to work with the regulations and so forth to allow us to, you know, divide the prison among more wards is something we should be doing. I understand the city of Berlin had to eliminate wards because they couldn't find any way to, you know, not have one ward essentially controlled by the prison. So they went to all large counselors again. So anyway, that's the first thing, is, you know, can we work up through the regulations, laws, whatever, to see if we can't get that situation changed before, you know, it ruins our government here? And the second thing is, communities of interest. I think a lot could be done to reconfigure the wards, you know, to better align with communities of interest in the city. I mean, in essence, you had a group of politicians who had two weeks to put it together, and that's what they did. But I'd like to suggest, for instance, that if you started with, say, whatever you call a downtown snowfalling district, and made that a ward, you know, expanding it or contracting it slightly to get the right number of people, that's a community of interest that should be their own ward, instead of being split up among three wards. And another thing is, the school charter commission is concerned about having a representative from each school attendance area on the school board. But right now, you only split between Merrimack Valley and the Concord School District. You aren't looking at the attendance areas for the different elementary schools in Concord in terms of, you know, aligning ward lines with them. Once again, that's a community of interest, the people, the kids all attend the same elementary school. And if you still have any of those good maps left over, you know, some of them the committee didn't mark there's that. If you wanted to give them to Mrs. Holley and Mrs. Lassard, I think they'd be interested in seeing them and seeing if they could, you know, rejig their ward lines to better configure themselves with the school attendance districts. And the thing is, you know, you cannot do the one for the next ten years right now. What you can do is you can get an idea of, you know, how this would be affected, and then update it, you know, you build a new apartment building, well, that's going to change the thing slightly. So you could be coming into this ten years from now with a better idea of what would be more logical wards based on communities of interest, rather than just historically showing the lines around. And that also would give the counselors a chance if they knew, you know, two or three years out, where the ward lines might change, and they could decide whether to run at large or locally or whatever. So I think, you know, doing this in two weeks is a, it's a miracle you were able to get a good product, but I think you'd get a better product if you start tomorrow, you know, looking into what would happen if we had, you know, a downtown ward, what would happen if the wards better conform to the school attendance districts, and, you know, give people a chance to be thinking sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question for you. So are you suggesting that we should change the charter to eliminate the ten wards? And are you saying that maybe it should be eight or twelve or? Because, as you know, we have to hit a number. I mean, it's a big math problem is really what it is. So, you know, and we do, right now, our charter says it's ten wards. So when you do that division, which is pretty simple, we know what we have to hit. And listening to some of your suggestions, which I think are interesting, are you suggesting we stay within that ten, or are you looking to do something different?
Well, you know, that's yet a different, interesting concept that I haven't, you know, suggested. But when I moved to Concord, there was only eight wards.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't know that ten is a magic number. And if you discovered, for instance, that it was easier to arrange, you know, like groupings, if you only had eight wards, then there's no reason you couldn't go to eight wards. And if you discovered, well, maybe fourteen wards is better, there's no reason you couldn't go to fourteen. But this is not something you can do in two weeks. And that's one of the reasons I'm suggesting. If you were to start looking at it further out, then you'd have more of a chance to get a logical thing.
Okay, so further questions? So I get to ask my, Jim, go ahead and ask a question.
Chairman's prerogative.
So I'm fascinated by this because I understand, where you say you want to prepare as much as you possibly can, but, you know, it's really the census numbers that drive these decision-making. For instance, do you think that we should have foreseen, in essence, the women's prison being put into Ward three? Because that was the biggest change in Ward three, which drove the greatest population gain. Also in Ward four, I think it'd be fair to say that the biggest population loss was probably the fact that we didn't have as many students at the Law Center who were physically located in Concord, they were, they were online. So I'm trying to understand how you think we can foresee some of these things.
Well, the answer is, ten years out, you probably can't foresee if they will decide to move the law school to Durham, which I understand is something that is always percolating in the back of the mind. On the other hand, the women's prison was not built overnight. You knew two years ago, four years ago, that there was going to be a women's prison, where it was going to be, and about how many people might be living there. So like I said, you could start, you know, with the macro things here, like what a downtown ward might look at if you started with a snow removal area and made it bigger or smaller as necessary. And the same thing, try and change Ward six and seven to better correspond to the attendance areas of the two elementary schools down that way.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Councilman C.
Couple of questions for you, Mr. Schweiger. Would you believe we took some of your input with respect to the census block that was next to the prison?
I noticed that you did both of the things I suggested at the last meeting, but I wasn't trying to take credit for it.
Could you guys write that down?
Mr. Schweiger, would you believe that on the maps we were provided by the planner, we did have information about where the school enrollment lines were for the Concord School District?
I would believe that, and I have no clue whether you use them in any way to shape the wards. I'm merely suggesting to you that there are members of the school charter commission that feel that's an important consideration.
I believe I saw you, Mr. Schweiger, at, at least one, if not more. I think two of our meetings, is that correct? You just came to one. And I believe at the meeting you attended, do you remember seeing Mr. Richards there, who's the president of the school board?
Yes, Mr. Richards is there, he's the president of the school board. He is not on the school charter commission.
Okay. Seeing none, further questions? Mr. Schweiger, thank you very much, I appreciate coming to talk tonight. Anyone else want to talk about redistricting? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, we, item thirty-four E, please.
Yes, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to support projects that enhance the special character and vitality of Concord in accepting the sum of twenty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
I have nothing to add, Your Honor.
Well said. All right, any questions? Mr. Manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who should testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item thirty-four F, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of fifty-five thousand dollars designated for conducting illegal drug-related investigations and accepting fifty-five thousand dollars in grant funding from the New Hampshire Department of Safety.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Governor, members of the council, this grant will allow the Concord Police Department to fund overtime costs associated with implementing programs designed to address the opioid issue within the city and surrounding communities. There is no requirement of any matching funds to be obligated for this grant. And I recommend that the council accept and appropriate these, these funds for the New Hampshire Department of Safety.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who should testify?
Just really quickly, my name is Connor Spurn. I work for Concord Coalition and Homelessness, and I am very excited that the city will be receiving these funds. And I hope that in using them, that we can work forward together and hopefully find some good solutions for the current opioid epidemic that is especially rampant right now. There's some really nasty stuff going around. We're seeing the deaths of people who are unexpectedly dying from things that they don't expect to die from. And I, you guys probably heard about the person who passed under the bridge recently on three ninety-three. I was there when they pulled him out. So I personally would be very excited to be working with the city going forward on the use of these funds and what we can do collaboratively, not only with CCH, but other organizations in Concord, and hopefully do something really impactful with those dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. And I believe it's our last one, correct?
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars for groundwater management permit activities for the former Allied Leather Tannery and Amazon Realty sites located at eleven thirty-three and thirty-five Canal Street, and authorizing the use of twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars from Pennacoke Village Tax and finance district fund balance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Governor, members of the council, in two thousand and two, the city initiated redevelopment plan for the former Allied Leather Tannery complex located on Canal Street. During the period of two thousand and three to two thousand and twelve, the city acquired eight individual parcels. In conjunction with the cleanup and the redevelopment efforts, various environmental permits and institutional controls were implemented by New Hampshire DES for the site. These included groundwater management permit for the city property located at eleven Canal Street, as well as real estate located at thirty-three through thirty-five Canal Street, which the city sold to the Caleb Development Corporation in two thousand and nineteen. The permit requires biannual groundwater testing for chromium, PFAS, and PFOA. The permit must be renewed every five years until such time as either, one, test results for contamination are below applicable governmental standards, or two, New Hampshire DES otherwise determines the permit is no longer required. The groundwater management permit must be renewed this coming spring. The estimated cost for renewal, as well as this year's rounded by, by annual sampling and related monitoring, well-maintenance, is thirty thousand dollars. City administration is requesting the city appropriate twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars from the Pennacoke Village Tax and Finance District to fund the balance for these activities. We also have sixty-six hundred dollars budgeted in the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Because of the groundwater management permit governs the city's property located at eleven Canal Street, as well as the Caleb property, the city and Caleb entered into a groundwater management agreement concerning administration and cost share of the groundwater management permit. The agreement was executed in September two, twenty-twenty-one, and simultaneously, the closing of the sale of the property to Caleb. Under the agreement, the city is responsible for the administration of the groundwater management permit. However, Caleb is responsible for assisting the city with certain costs associated with monitoring well-maintenance, as well as sampling and reporting. Caleb will be invoiced for the respective costs and the actual costs associated once completed by the city in accordance with the terms of the current GMP, Groundwater Management Permit. Groundwater sampling and reporting will be completed this fall. The application to renew the groundwater management permit will be submitted to New Hampshire DES shortly thereafter, and a new permit will take effect in April of twenty-twenty-two. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Who has questions for the manager? All right, seeing none. Well, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who should testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We take this to our action phase. I'm going to ask, we're going to take a two-minute recess.
American people, we are surrounded by them. The problem is, we're not paying attention. The city of Concord has land that we protect, that are Native American burial grounds, and we do not disclose where they are for the specific reason that that is what the culture demands. So, we are moving the needle every single day, but the conversation needs to continue. So, I support this effort. I would have done more. More importantly, the fact that we are having this conversation today, and not that we were having this conversation in September, says that we are open to our democratic process, and we will listen to both sides. And that was the argument that we were having in December, not, or September, rather, not whether this change should happen, but that we listen to our community. Thank you.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support this ordinance change as well, and I do think that we can do more. I think that we run the risk of passing this as a feel-good measure, or something that's simply performative, and so I think we need to do more in that we are delving into our DEI work in next month, I believe, and I think that's a really good opportunity to talk about ways that we can advance the standing and the rights of Indigenous people here. So, I hope that this body will move to support this ordinance change and also be committed to doing, to doing more.
Thank you very much. Counselor Pierce.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your comments. It was great to listen to the public, and I, and I want to add that for the last five or 10 years, I have not looked at a Statue of Columbus and not thought about all that went on. But in this particular case, I'd like to move that we table this, and with a second to that motion, I'd be happy to explain.
Second.
Motion made second to table this. Typically, table motions aren't usually discussed, but absolutely.
I feel as though that we're being put in a tough position. I, I think that this is a federal and state issue, and I think we're, I do believe, and one of the gentlemen in the audience said, I do believe that we're asking to look at political correctness through a lens that's 529-years-old in order to decide which group was more politically correct. I, I don't think anything we do here tonight is going to bring, fix the atrocities that, that took place, but I am all about having an Indigenous Peoples' Day named in addition to Columbus Day. This council has a long history of not wanting to get in the middle of neighborhood fights. I go back to the issue of the chicken coops near the borders, and we, we nicked that because we thought it was a neighborhood argument. I don't, certainly don't equate what this is to that, but you, you get the idea. So, the reason for tabling this is I would like to create another holiday, but in conversations with the city manager, there is a cost to the city to do that, whether it becomes labor, free parking, so on and so forth, and I would like to have those numbers in order to do something and have the financial discussion associated with creating a new holiday. So, I would leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Point of order. What comes next? Is it a vote on the tabling motion? Okay.
That's non-debatable, right?
I, I rule that we're a little loosey-goose on that one, but we always have, and I take my cue from Mayor Verneau and Mayor Donovan, following the tradition.
In that case, I will say two quick things, just to make sure I have the time to do it. One is that our colleague, Counselor Rob Warner from Ward Five, asked me to read a short statement on his behalf. He really wanted to be here for this vote. He really wanted to vote in support of moving forward with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And if folks may remember, he is actually at an international conference right now, doing good work in other ways. So, Counselor Warner, son.
I don't mean to stop, but just, so when you get back, if, if this was to pass, we table it, but if it fails, then we back to the original motion, if you want to read it then, because I'm assuming this is not about, his motion, his statement is not about the tabling, it's probably about the issue.
It's about the issue.
So, want to do it if we get to that point?
Sure. I just don't want to miss an opportunity to share Counselor Warner's remarks, because I've made a promise.
I just want to kind of keep it to the table piece.
Well, it's two sentences, so why don't I just get it done with? There are times when we must think anew regarding, there are times when we must think anew regarding how we consider the past and its impact on many of our citizens. We find ourselves in one of those times at this moment. I support changing the current city of Concord ordinance to officially celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October, starting on October 10th, 2022. I will also add my own remark to this motion. I was at the polls on Tuesday, last Tuesday, as many of us were, and all day long, I only had one individual come to me with anything other than enthusiasm to move forward with this change. And one of the things that that individual said is something Counselor Pierce just said, that they would like us to stay focused on local issues instead of national issues. And I have to say, as disappointed as I was that we didn't agree on the issue for all of the reasons of human rights and the celebration, recognition of Indigenous peoples, what struck me the most about the conversation was that it was referred to as a national issue, as we literally stood on the ancestral homeland of the Abenaki people. This isn't a national issue. This is a Concord, Pennecook, Abenaki, Wabanaki issue, and I think that's why it's really important that we acknowledge that and move forward. And I can understand that for some people, it's hard to make that change, but I will tell you, there's a whole generation ready to embrace it. You saw it tonight from the students here, and you heard it from the folks who were here, from, I think they've gone, but from Havenwood, who, and, you know, Patricia Bass, I hope you're watching still for Patricia, constituent of mine, 90-years-old, who wrote in and asked for this to move forward, because even at 90-years-old, she recognizes that she wants to continue to, to learn more, when she knows more, do better. And I think that's the kind of energy that this city council should represent tonight. I will be voting no on the motion to table.
Counsel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counselor Pierce made a motion to table. I seconded it. If that's the correct word, seconded the motion. I guess in, in recognition of your concern about the finance component of it, I think that, that's a legitimate concern. I think we've been talking about two issues this evening. There's the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, which I think is a noble effort, something that all of us want to get behind, and there's also a desire to strike the name Columbus Day from our record, because it's offensive to some people. There's certainly a way to move forward and accomplish both of those efforts. Again, I really enjoy the idea of changing Columbus Day to Concord Heritage Day, Cultural Heritage, something that's inclusive, something that a group could, could investigate and come up with something that's acceptable. With regard to Indigenous Peoples' Day, there were several suggestions made via written testimony. One of them was the day after Thanksgiving, and, you know, if we were to choose a day such as the day after Thanksgiving, which is already, I believe, a paid city holiday, is that correct, Mr. Manager? There would be no financial component, and that does fall within the month of November, as you mentioned, which is Native American Cultural Heritage Month. So, there, there are ways that we can accomplish all of these tasks, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I agree with you, that, that, and that's, if this tabling motion passes, then I will get in, I'm happy to get into those issues and, and have a committee and so on and so forth. That's what I meant, that's what I mean to do. I was trying to keep it short.
Counsel.
Don't you wish that you would follow strict parliamentary rules on that? I want, I just want to say, I do not support this motion. I do not support this motion. Often, tabling means nothing gets done, and I just feel like we're pushing something down the road. I don't favor having another holiday. Just strongly do not support a tabling motion.
Thank you very much. Counsel, Jim.
Move the question, Your Honor. Thank you.
Good boy. Thank you.
Motion made to move the, motion, yes, got it. So, if you are in favor of tabling this item this evening, you will vote yes. If you oppose the tabling, you vote no. Because I'm the chair, I'm going to say that I'll be voting no. I think we've heard an hour and a half of testimony. I appreciate your goodwill, but I think we've heard plenty on this topic, and I think I'm ready to vote, and I encourage you all to be ready as well.
Could we have a roll call vote, Your Honor?
You sure can. Madam Clerk, start the roll with Counsel Kinnison.
Counsel Kinnison.
Uh, no.
Counsel Kretovic.
No.
Counsel Matson.
No.
Counsel McNamara.
Absolutely no.
Counsel Nian.
No.
No to tabling?
No, no to tabling. I, I.
Courtesy.
Counsel Pierce.
Yes.
Counsel Weiss-Hawkins.
No.
Counsel Todd.
No.
Counsel Bouchard.
No.
Mayor Boule.
No.
Counsel Chimplin.
No.
Counsel Fennessey.
No.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
No.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Okay. Motion fails. It takes us back to original motion. Is there any further discussion? Would you like to read Counsel Warner's statement now?
I would love to read it again. It's two per and support.
Anybody else? Counsel Chappell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank all the people who came and, and testified. It was nice to see the kids from Proctor Academy. I remember those days. I remember when I was in college, and we were talking about the Vietnam War, and it's great to see young people with passion and strong beliefs. As most people know, I'm a traditionalist. I believe that we should go trick-or-treating on October 31st. I believe that it is an enviable right to have the Friday after Thanksgiving off, to do whatever we want to do, and not to have shopping days on Thanksgiving Day. However, the truth of matter is that sometimes traditions should change. Setting aside whether Christopher Columbus was a good person or a bad person, or whether he was Italian or not Italian, I think it's clear that he was at the vanguard of a century of European colonization, which benefited many of us, but which led to genocidal policies against Native Americans and Indigenous peoples. Whether you want to start with the conquistadors and what they did in South America and Mexico, you want to talk about the Native American relocation and displacement that started here in New England with the Puritans and continued all the way to California, or if you want to talk about the boarding schools that were referenced earlier and that the Canadians are now trying to come to grips with, you know, the Native American people were, were poorly treated. I'm a student of the Judeo-Christian Bible, and the one thing that I think I've learned by doing that is that justice is at the core of God's intentions for humanity. I think it's time for justice for Indigenous people, and I think this is an opportunity, even if it's symbolic, to recognize their presence on the land for millennia and today, as we've heard, and to remind ourselves of their deep and continuing contributions to our society and our culture. Further, I think that approving this motion is consistent with the resolution that this body adopted several months ago in the wake of the killing of George Floyd, and our commitment to diversity and to honoring the diverse cultures and populations that this city, that represent this city. Furthermore, and I'm not making a motion about this, I would, at some point, love to see the city council adopt a land acknowledgement to start our meetings, as you've heard today. We are on the land of the, of the Pennecook people, as we've heard, they've been here, they were here for millennia, and I think that would be a great step for us to take. But, to me, the first step is to vote yes in favor of the resolution before us. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counsel Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think generally, my ward heard from more people who are for this than against it, in favor of the name change, and of course, certainly, I recognize that I represent Pennecook. So, there's not too many days that go by when I don't use that name and actually think about Native Americans. It just comes to me. But that might not be the case for all folks who live in our community. I think that this is really not an attempt to erase or change history, because we can't do that. This body certainly doesn't have any kind of power close to that. But I think that in some of the comparisons and, and words that I've heard, it's, it reminds me of the Black Lives Matter movement, when some responded to that by saying, "Well, all lives matter." And certainly, I agree with that. I think all lives do matter, but that kind of misses the point. The point really is to focus on a particular group who I think have, have suffered, and we heard a lot of testimony about that here tonight, and I do thank all the folks who came out tonight to speak. But really, I think it's an opportunity for learning, and I kind of view it as a way to rethink and retell our history and to tell a more complete story. And I think by voting in favor of this tonight, we begin down that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you. So, unlike Counselor Chaplant, I grew up trick-or-treating on October 30th, not October 31st.
Arrows.
And my fa-
Third to which.
And my father went to work at 4:00 AM on the day after Thanksgiving, so that was not a holiday, to me at least. I also grew up understanding that Columbus never set foot in America, and I'm somewhat surprised that apparently people are still being taught things that I certainly didn't learn in school about Columbus and sort of this mythology surrounding him. So, obviously, we don't have any, as, as we all know, we don't have any jurisdiction over the schools. So, I have no problem with changing Columbus Day. I think what we've heard a lot tonight, and what I heard from a number of constituents is, you know, why are we wading into this? Why aren't we more focused on, you know, more important things? You know, we had a roomful of people tonight about Indigenous Peoples' Day, and everybody left, you know, when we started talking about redistricting, which I would argue is maybe the most important thing we do, aside from setting a budget, because what we do today with respect to redistricting affects how people are represented for the next 10 years. So, I'm more than happy to move forward with changing the name of Columbus Day, and I'll vote in favor of that. But I also, for all, for everybody who came out, I, I would have, I, I got, I think, two emails about redistricting, and to me, that's something that's very important, that I think I'd like to see our community paying attention, besides Mr. Schweiker, who did a great job of informing us on his views. Thank you.
Counsel Knight.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to vote against the motion, and I want to make sure my vote is understood by everybody in this room, anybody who's listening to this, which is, I support Indigenous Peoples' Day. I also support changing the name Columbus Day, but I support changing it to something that's much more inclusive, that will bind the community together rather than divide the community. So, for that reason, I'll be voting against Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Anyone else? Okay, we ready for the question? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
And the ayes have it. Motion's adopted. Madam Clerk, item 36, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title I, General Code, Chapter 13, Public Health, Noise, Section 13, Dash 6, Dash 9, Construction Noise.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item 37, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title I, General Code, Chapter 1, Government Organization, Article 1, Dash 5, Fees, Fines, and Penalties, Penalties and Parking Violations.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item 38, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title I, General Code, Chapter 1, Government Organization, Article 1, Dash 3, Miscellaneous Regulations, Amending Section 1, Dash 3, Dash 9, Ward Lines.
Move approval. Second.
So, could I ask from Mr. Nian making the motion, that it could be the ordinances presented with the changes that were brought forth tonight by the city solicitor?
Yes, Your Honor, that's exactly what I said in that.
And the second, is that the same?
Second.
Okay, so we have before us the proposed changes, along with what was presented as the community recommendation. Is there any discussion? Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you. I want to echo the thanks that a number of people raised during the questioning from Sam Durfee and from our city solicitor, and from the individuals who did turn out for our meetings. We did have some very important public input that we considered, and to all of the members of the committee who worked very hard. We had three meetings, but they were three, I think, very substantive meetings, and a lot of people took it very seriously. Everybody had their own map, and were trying to figure out ways to, to adequately apportion everybody in a way that was compact and represented the communities of interest. And I, I, it may not be perfect, and I know Mr. Schweiker thinks it's not perfect, which is fine, but there's only so much you can do, and as, as the mayor said, it's a math problem, but it's a pretty hard math problem, so I will be supporting it.
Anyone else? Counsel Jim.
Thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, I just want to echo what Counsel Fennessey said earlier, which is that I think this is one of the most important things that we've worked on during the year, and it will last for 10 years, and I, I too wish that we'd had more feedback from people, and perhaps people had paid more attention, and perhaps we had had a little bit more media attention around it as well. I agree that, I agree that it, it really was a math problem, and anyone who's worried about their cognitive abilities should sit down with one of these three-by-four maps with all the little numbers and all the roads and the rivers and everything, and try to figure out how to make these wards work. It was a really interesting exercise. So, thank you very much, and I'll be voting in favor.
Anyone else? I just, Counsel Grady Sexton.
I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry, I do want to thank Mr. Tony Chanel from The Patch for his thorough coverage of the whole process, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Just, this, believe it or not, this is my third redistricting committee that I participated in, the last two that I've taken, and I thought the committee did an outstanding job. Everyone, I really appreciate the time you all took individually to look at the map and to create, come up with as creative solutions as we possibly can. But I specifically just want to not address just the committee, but specifically, I wonder if the city clerk, Ms. Bonifant, Mr. Kennedy, our state solicitor, and of course, Mr. Durfee from our plane department. All three of these folks sat with me, worked with me, guided me through this process, and I think we came up with a very, a very good product for, for the citizens of Concord to participate within our electoral process, and obviously, I hope that the state of New Hampshire respects our boundaries and works with us and gives, makes sure that the city Concord is well-represented in the legislature, so. Mr. Pierce.
Quick question. Now, what's the next process, once it's approved, in letting our constituents know? This is the first time I've gone through it. Are they mailed a letter saying you're, what, what is the process?
The plan is to notify each household within a given ward of any changes that took place.
Okay. And I will make sure that happens, because I want your constituents to make sure they call you.
Except for the docs on River Road that are going to him.
Oh, no.
Counsel Fennessey.
One thing I, I don't think was raised as part of the public hearing, was that we are actually going to have some changes to polling locations if this is approved. So, if you're in Ward Four or Ward Five, be on the lookout, because there is going to be a change in polling location if this is approved.
Thank you.
We're already there.
I appreciate you bringing that out, and I would just simply add, not to belabor this, but this is, this is, I think, important enough to recognize that sometimes the city council is criticized, or the school board is criticized, that we don't work closely enough together. This is an example, I think, where the school board and the city council came together very well, and that the school board recognizes how important elections are in our city, and their willingness to open up their buildings, those community buildings that they have, to make sure that we have the most accessible polling locations within the city. So, I just want to specifically signal out the Concord School District, as well as Mayor McValley School District, for their willingness to open their doors. Anyone else? Okay. With that, are we ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you again. Takes us to item 39, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $23,125 to support projects that enhance the special character and vitality of Concord and accepting the sum of $23,125 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. The motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 40, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $55,000 designated for conducting illegal drug-related investigations and accepting $55,000 in grant funding from the New Hampshire Department of Safety.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to approve this item. Any discussion?
They're fighting it out over there.
This is an unruly group tonight.
Yeah, it is. Totally.
You should see it when Mayor Prosser meets.
It's the time change. It is 11:00.
Okay, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. The motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 41, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $23,400 for groundwater management permit activities for the former Allied Leather Family and Amazon Realty sites located at 1133 and 35 Canal Street, and authorizing the use of $23,400 from Pennecook Village Tax Increment Finance to their bond balance.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And have received necessary two-thirds. The motion is adopted. It takes us to new business, Madam Clerk.
It's a communication from John Cronin, Cronin, Bisson, and Zalinski, PC, on behalf of their client, Brady Sullivan Properties, requesting consideration be given to discontinuing the unimproved portion of Stickney Avenue encumbering the property at 11 Stickney Avenue. They did also submit a revised exhibit for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I asked that this be put on the agenda under new business. I wanted to have a quick discussion regarding this item. I think ultimately, what I'm asking the council is to, to simply have a motion to accept the letter. I see no reason to actually set a public hearing at this time. I think that there are significant unknowns as we move forth with the widening by 93. We don't know how that's going to affect Stickney Ave. We don't know how it's going to be widened. We don't know so many things regarding that area in exit 14. I think it's premature to go ahead forth and to discontinue something like this. So, I would simply just ask for a motion to accept the letter, if that's the will of the council.
Motion to accept the letter.
Motion made second to simply accept the letter. Counsel Keach.
Just one comment. I, I think you're headed in the right direction, but, but I would, I would like, I would like to hear from our legal counsel, perhaps non-public, about-
No, no need to talk about non-public. This is a public matter, and-
No, just in terms of our obligation to respond to that at all?
Would you believe I've actually done that? And-
That's why I'm asking.
Probably wouldn't have put it on the agenda like this if it was a preissue. We have no obligation, either by ordinance, or state law, or case law, that requires us to hold a hearing. And I'm not saying that we never would hold a hearing, it's just simply, I think it's premature, and we just don't know what's going to happen.
That was my only question, whether we're obligated to do that, but asked and answered. Thank you.
May Mrs. Solicitor, did I answer that properly?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah.
Sorry. It was well done. Okay, so, with that, do we have any other discussion? I'm sorry. Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. We do have one item for suspense, and Madam Clerk, if you could read that, please.
So, it was item 27 that was pulled off?
Nope. Oh, you want to do that one first?
No, suspense.
You know what? I'm wrong. Let's do the, the one pulled off. Let's do the, the one pulled off.
So, my apologies. So the one that was pulled off, consent, is a report from the Parks and Recreation Director and the Director of Human Resources recommending the reinstatement of the recreation supervisor position within Parks and Recreation.
Okay, why did I ask for the, okay, um, so, th- there are several items for next month talking about, um, pay grade changes, and, you know, we're, we're basically five months out from adopting the budget, and, you know, fine, we'll have a public hearing on those, and we'll have a healthy discussion, I think. This one, I got to confess to you, um, I, I need, I think I need a flow chart to figure out, uh, who is moving where and who is moving to what, and who was on first. Maybe you all read it and were just fine with it, but I, I just, if we're going to make these changes, I think perhaps, uh, a more holistic view of, of the department might be helpful, at least from my perspective. Who are you looking to change in labor grades, and why are you looking to change them? How does it fit into the overall structure of the department? So I'm just asking, perhaps we, uh, simply table this, put it on hold, and, um, I, it would be helpful for me to better understand what all the moves are and why the moves are necessary, um, if we just kind of take a pause for a second. That's, um, I'm, I'm not saying that this is wrong.
We can do that.
I'm not saying that it's right. I'm saying, I don't know.
Do you need a motion?
I'm saying to, I would love to hear discussion of what you think. Counsel Grayson?
I would also, um, thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to see what the current salary is and what the proposed changes might be for the labor grade steps, and maybe the philosophy behind it. Like, what are, are these people taking on additional tasks? Are there job changes, um, that would warrant, um, these types of changes in terms of, uh, step increases?
Yes.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Counsel Fennessey, sorry.
Can I ask a question of the manager? So my understanding, based on this report and my understanding from Parks and Rec, is that the change was necessitated by some need for additional supervisory responsibilities? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so is the expectation that reinstituting this position would be to allow you to properly compensate someone to exercise that increased supervisory authority that you need as part of the department?
That, that is certainly part of it. There's other pieces to this that, as a matter of fact, Counsel Akrotovic has mentioned to me before about looking at, as the mayor mentioned, a holistic approach to how we're changing things. They, the job market is changing so fast, and, and as you know, and I think everybody in the council realizes, every time a, someone leaves a position, we take a look at that position in, in context for the rest of the department. But it wouldn't be bad to step back and, uh, as the mayor said, the budget's not that far away, to take a look at how all these pieces put together, make sure that you're comfortable that where we're putting the focus is where Park and Recreation needs to focus, because there, there is so much demand for Park and, as you know, when we had the, um, uh, through the COVID process, the demand for Park and Recreation Service, the demand for library services was great, so we had to change things around so much to serve those, all those, all those needs. And I think we, as the community has expressed well, we've done a great job doing that, or they, the staff has done a great job doing that, but it's still continuing to evolve. And as we try to add more hours here, whether it's, uh, through Park and Recreation programs or, uh, through other programs we have in other, other facilities, that it's going to continue to change. So I appreciate the fact that over the years, you've allowed me to make these changes as time goes on, but they're happening so fast now, it wouldn't, it would not be bad to step back and say, here's where we are, here's why we need to make some changes, and here's where we're going, so we can do that.
Counsel Fennessey?
Thank you. Uh, if we move to table this, will this negatively impact your ability to add additional personnel to Parks and Rec?
Oh, if, if you're just tabling it to have a gr- a larger discussion next month? No.
Okay.
And, thank you for the question. So, but isn't also true that we funded the vacate position, correct?
Yes.
So the money's present.
Yeah, the money's here. It's not a, it's not a budgetary issue for fiscal year '22. It would be for, for going forward, it, to make sure that this is where we, we want to be, and what those additional costs could be in fiscal year '23 and beyond.
But in terms of hiring somebody, you have the authority to go ahead and do that now.
I do.
I just didn't want people to get the wrong impression that we were trying to stop you from hiring somebody or to do the things you need to do.
I didn't get that impression.
Until now.
I would just simply remind you, like, you like to remind me that, um, you know, as we go forth in, I mean, there's a reason why we spend as much time we do on the budget, because we go line by line looking at all these things, and we listen to the requests of the departments. And it was just not a short period of time ago that we heard from the Recreation Department budget, as we heard from the police and fire and assessing and clerk and everyone else in between. So when we make these changes, although when they say, and I appreciate you say these are non, uh, um, there's no fiscal impact this current fiscal year...
Right.
Once you make the change, or once we make the change, your responsibility is then, you have to find the money to fund it going forward. And we have probably four or five items that is going to, next month, that we're going to have here, that are going to talk about exactly that, how we're going to increase the budget for next year, uh, by simply doing this. So, and I just, as I said, maybe this is exactly the right thing to do. It could very well be. I just would like a little better explanation.
Before you vote, you want to make sure you understand exactly what's happening. I, I understand.
A visio.
Move to table to a time certain being the next city council meeting in December.
Fair enough. Second.
Does it, the motion before us to table, you know that being non-debatable?
Sure.
Selected application.
Sure, yeah, now it is.
After, after 10 o'clock, it is, after, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And we do have one item for suspense. Madam Clerk?
Yes. It's an ordinance, um, to potentially be set for December public hearing. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28, Article 28-2 Zoning Districts and allowable uses.
Actually, before, let me, I apologize. Um, can I get a motion to suspend the rules to allow for suspense?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. You've heard the suspense item, and that was read by Madam Clerk. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to have a public hearing on this item at the December city council meeting.
Correct.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you very much. I believe that concludes our agenda items for this evening. Madam Clerk, am I right?
Yeah.
I have a motion. Return.
Um, I, you know what? Before, before I did that, I was going to let us do the comments.
Oh, sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
I, I, I really did like the enthusiasm, though. I haven't said...
Just kind of like, just kind of like.
Counsel Pierce?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I do want to thank the folks in Ward Two who voted me in for another, uh, another term. I was, uh, one vote behind all day, but, uh, I did get to meet many of my constituents. I also want to thank the Kleiner children who live in Sandwood Acres in Ward Two for their courage and caring in getting their COVID vaccination shots this past week. Congratulations to these two young elementary school ladies and their parents, so. I told them I would mention them. They were on the way to the doctors when I saw them, so.
Two votes you have.
Yeah.
Future posts.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, members of the council, thank you so much for approving, um, on the consent agenda, the tree removal project at Beaver Meadow Golf Course. This, of course, is the second year that we are looking at the health of the forest that we have that surrounds our golf course. Um, there has been some conversation in the community about what exactly is going on there, and rather than just looking at the blobs on the map of an aerial view of what might be going, what might not be going, um, we thought it was important to, to really look at what's happening on the ground. We have deadfall that is inside that forest, and we have 23,000 rounds of golf this year, plus we have cross-country skiing with children that's coming up for the winter season. Deadfall anywhere where there are people is not something that we want to be in. We want to recognize that Beaver Meadow Golf Course has been here for 125 years, and believe it or not, we've actually had some forest growth during that time period. The last few years with the three different parasites that we've had in our community that have affected our white pines, our red pines, and of course, our ash borer, um, it has created a significant amount of death of the trees that are at the golf course, which is why we have this deadfall. The other part is, it is primarily a golf course, and cleaning up that forest floor, which is now covered with a lot of overgrowth, and it's very dark, it interferes with the way grass, um, grows on the golf course. That was evident in the report we received from the agronomists several years ago. It's what we, as a council and a community, have been moving forward for the past few years. So I'd like to invite everybody to come and join us and actually see what's happening, um, out at the golf course. We have the largest, uh, um, pollinator garden in the city with the area that we removed for trees last year. That event is going to be December 4th at 10:00 a.m. It is not accessible. You will have to remember it's going to be winter, the ground will be frozen, it could be snow-covered. We will not be taking golf carts out on the golf course, we will be walking the course, and we are going to the farthest part away from, uh, the...
This is not a good marketing job.
I know, but, but if people want to see it, they need to go, and I, I think it's important because it is a community conversation to know what, um, I mean, this is a golf course that adds revenue to our city, and it offsets our tax base, and we use it for winter recreation. It's an important asset in our community, and people have concerns about that tree loss, and I totally understand it, but you also need to understand the trees are dead, and we need to get rid of them. Thank you. So, 10 a.m., December 4th.
I voted yes.
Will the clubhouse be open afterwards for lunch?
Sure, yes, it will be open, uh, because, uh, there will also be the winter, um, winter indoor golf that will be happening, which I also encourage.
You know, Counsel Jeff?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I'm sure that the mayor will be mentioning the, uh, the election later, but I just want to say that, uh, for the first time in the eight years that I've been on this council, um, I, I was not holding a sign with my name on it on Election Day, and, uh, I kind of took a bustman's holiday and managed to stroll around or ride around to all 10 wards. And I have to say, uh, it was great to be able to see the people who are coming out to vote, coming out to vote. Uh, on the other hand, it would have been like, nice to see a lot more of them. Uh, our municipal elections are probably the most significant, uh, electoral opportunity that, uh, our citizens have, uh, because of the impact of what we do on them every day, from, uh, the, uh, tax rate on their property to snow removal, uh, to, uh, uh, you know, keeping roads paved, uh, and safety services. So, uh, it was really, uh, nice to be able to, uh, to see the, the process in action all across the city. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have three, and I'm going to try to go fast. Uh, the first is, I also want to thank the voters of Ward One for their support of me, and, uh, and thank, uh, our city clerk, and also, uh, the folks volunteering at the polls at Ward One for another, uh, excellent job, and a really smooth process, led by Irene Ortega there. Um, the second, uh, the Pennacook Village Association is going to hold its annual meeting on Monday, November 29th at 6:30 p.m. at the Pennacook Elementary School Cafeteria. Masks are required to attend this event per school rules. Um, and the special guest speaker will be Matt Walsh, Director of Redevelopment Downtown Services Special Projects, who will discuss, among other things, the status of the Merchant's Way development, that Exit 17, uh, Whitney Road, the Pennacook Landing Apartments Phase One and Two, the Catch Rosemary's Way Apartments, and design for the new city front park at the Pennacook Landing Site. So, hope we all will attend. That's, uh, Monday, November 29th, 6:30 p.m., Pennacook Elementary School Cafeteria. And then two days later, on December 1st, in Boudreaux Square, off Village Street, uh, the Pennacook Village Association will once again hold its, uh, tree lighting ceremony. And that will start at 6:00 o'clock. You can convene a little earlier than that. There'll be singing. We hope that the Pennacook Elementary School Chorus will also be able to attend. That's a little up in the air right now, but we will have singing, uh, and, uh, we will, uh, hopefully have also a visit from Santa, if we're all good. So, see you there at that event as well. Thank you.
It's a call again this year.
Counsel Keach is not invited.
I'm an Ogo.
I believe I saw Santa at the polls at Ward One. Counsel McAdams?
Um, I appreciate, along with some of my constituents, the, how quickly city purchasers ordered and received, uh, lights, our 3,000, 3,000 K LED light bulbs that are warmer, less blue, and they are being, being put up. There are 44 that have been installed, 12 streets. Pretty cool.
Plus you.
Counsel Grayson?
Thank you. I just wanted to once again thank everybody who came out from the community tonight, and there were a lot of people who helped facilitate important conversations in our city, too